10:00 AM, Wednesday, January 6, 2021. Takes me about, I remember it's the next year for about six weeks and then I go back and write 20 or something on it. So we'll see how far we get here this year. So January 6, 2021. First item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My pledge to allegiance is to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we do have citizen input on the agenda. We've had a few requests by citizen members to communicate with us, and then we may have others today also. At this time, with folks that have contacted us previously, I'd like to start off with Michelle Bayard, and there may be others on this topic. So we're gonna have to just work together on this. This is a Zoom three-minute testimony opportunity for members of the public, and we're gonna be letting people into a Zoom call as a participant, and when you're standing by, you're just able to view, but as soon as you get selected as a participant, you're able to speak. So I see Michelle Bayard.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Okay, good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you, and feel all congratulations for your election to the Board. Since February 2020, the Huns have consistently tried to make their objections to the Hundle Road Improvement Project known to the County Road Department. In the last three months, we have interacted with you to make you aware of our objections. We truly appreciate your willingness to hear our concerns, and we also appreciate the adjustments to the road design the County Road Department made as a result of our suggestions. I will not repeat our objections in details, but the main points are as follows. Hundle Road should be designed as a local road, not a collector. There was no public involvement of the neighborhood in determining the designation as a collector. The high priority of the project, the high priority designation of the project, was determined without any public involvement of the neighborhood as required by the TSP. The Huns do not need a Hundle Road improvement and are happy with the way it serves the needs of the neighborhood. Based on the traffic volume supplied by the County Road Department, which are 400 vehicles a day today versus 900 to 1,100 after completion of the project, the improvement at a cost of $4.6 million is clearly not justified. Using our own trail cameras, we have measured less than 100 cars or vehicles a day and not 400 over the past few months. Hundle Roads connect Tomah Road to Rogers Road. There's really no road between Rogers Road and the local road, just a dirt path, and the improvement would add a few miles to the system. The TSP states that the Huns shall not add any miles of collectors unless the need for a road can be clearly demonstrated. It hasn't been demonstrated in any way. The TSP also states that the vast majority of county collectors have sufficient capacity to accommodate the forecast 2030 traffic volumes. Some segment roads will require improvements, the TSP states, but Hundle Road is not mentioned as one of them. The Hundle Road Improvement Project requires a lot of resources of the County Road Department that could be used to work on other needed projects. In view of our objections, we feel that an improvement project should be stopped. Thank you for listening to the Huns' assessment of the Hundle Road Improvement Project, and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much for the testimony. So there has been a mention of a few other people on this topic from your request originally. Is there a request to speak on this topic also by Max Robertson, Thomas Andrade, or Dennis Gant, and they may be in the attendees list? So you mentioned other names on here. Looks like we don't...
I think they just wanted to attend immediately and give them the connections.
Great, so they're able to follow this. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your testimony, which is a new year, and we're getting up to speed.
Thank you.
Sure, let's do that. So Mr. Andrade is available. We're gonna ask just real quick if he wanted to speak on the subject.
I was also wondering if Julie Robertson is connected with Max Robertson.
Well, I wasn't prepared to speak. Michelle said I wanted to listen in and see what else was gonna be said, but I certainly support what he has said along with the rest of the Association membership. But thank you for hearing our concerns. We appreciate it a lot. And also, a thank you goes out to Commissioner Adair. Her work is obvious, and there were some changes made as soon as she met with us, so thank you very much for your help.
Great. And then Robertson was not under Max Robertson. He came and went, so maybe... See, go ahead and put him in real quick, or him or her.
I was wondering if Julie Robertson is connected with Max Robertson?
Just in case. I think, yeah, the purple one. So this is our technology demonstration today. Is this Max Robertson under Julie Robertson login? So you have been put in as a participant, terminology-wise too, I guess, as a panelist at this point in time, so Robertson, if you would like to take it off of mute. There you go.
Yes, am I here?
Yes.
Oh, good. I actually found the unmute button.
Good, congratulations.
I'd like to, yeah, I'm watching my clock, so thanks. I wasn't planning on speaking either, but I will. Thanks for having us. I'd like to echo Michelle's sentiments and the key points that the Huns have in terms of holding off on the production of this road. I guess I'll present a little bit different background, but I won't go through the points that Michelle did, but my situation is that I've lived here for 50 years since 1971, and I've seen a lot of changes in Bend. The growth of this community, to me, has been exponential and, in many ways for me, unanticipated with incredible spurts and lags in terms of its growth. And I've seen neighborhoods in this town go from quiet residential areas to absolute amazing thoroughfares with the needed, in some places, development of roads to get traffic flowing north, south, east, west, whether that be in the downtown core or out on the perimeter of the urban growth boundary. I've lived in town in a variety of locations, but I've lived out here on Hundle Road for 35 years, and in my 50 years of having lived here, I've come to know the absolute uniqueness of our neighborhood out here, miles from the downtown core, where my wife and I had five acres just up the road, and now we have 24 acres and a farm. And the uniqueness of this area and the people that have lived here for decades, in addition to our family, live out here for a lot of reasons. One of them is peace, quiet, seclusion, farm life, recreational opportunities, and this neighborhood is unique. So if some of the people here in attendance at the meeting today have not seen the Hundle Road area, I urge you to come out and take a look at what we have here because, in my opinion, in the opinion of some of the people that I speak with around here, the development of this road, period, would absolutely be a huge detriment to the quality of life, the lifestyle out here, and the neighborhood of the Hundle Road area and adjacent properties, which I feel is probably the last bastion of great recreation and homeownership left within the immediate area, somewhat within a couple of miles of the city. So please let's hold off on this project and cancel it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony and timing also. So great catch, Commissioner Chang, on connecting up the last names there. At this time, we'll move to the next item. So this is an email. Mr. Jerry Boyd, a Primeville resident, sent us a letter of support for the Public Safety Training Facility Discussion for today. So it's not a public hearing on the matter, but there is an email that came in on that topic. Next, we have Mr. B.J. Soper. This is a request to speak, also previous to our meeting, and he's available on Zoom, is my understanding. Thank you very much for joining us via Zoom. We did receive your written testimony on the topic also. You're able to participate with unmute. There we are, thank you.
There we go.
Yes, we hear you.
Yeah. Great. So I originally thought we were gonna talk for a little bit longer, but that's fine. We got these three minutes. So you got my email, and I will summarize very briefly within the timeframe here. So to get started, this is a quote from our Supreme Court of the United States. "The general misconception is that any statute passed by legislators bearing the appearance of law constitutes the law of the land. The Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of this land, and any statute to be valid must agree. It is impossible for both the Constitution and the law violating it to be valid. One must prevail. Since an unconstitutional law is void, the general principles following that imposes no duties, confers no rights, creates no office, bestows no power or authority on anyone, affords no protections, and justifies no acts permitted under it. No one is bound to obey an unconstitutional law, and no courts are bound to enforce it." Kay Brown has deemed her Executive Order 2066 the law of this land. "The Constitution of the State of Oregon is the supreme law of this land, and for any law to be valid, it must meet the constitutional requirements set forth that it created. The statement I drafted before you contains nine constitutional violations described that exist inside of Executive Order 2066. It only takes one for a law or rule or order to be unconstitutional and invalid. There are nine here. Now, I'm just a simple pig farmer, so the chances are that I probably missed one or two more. My hope was that I'd be able to go through the list with you, but having three-minute time limit on my right to instruct our representatives, which is detailed out in Article 1, Section 23, if you're wondering, makes that impossible, so I hope you will read my statement in front of you in its entirety to understand the facts and the points that I'm trying to make." Now, not only are there at least nine constitutional violations, but Brown has also given legal effect to rule and orders not yet written. In Chapter 2 of her executive order, she has given the OHA authority to develop issue and from time to time revise binding guidance. In case you're wondering, this is also a violation of Article 1, Section 21 of the Oregon Constitution, ex post facto laws. The executive order wraps up with a separability clause, which has no business in an executive order designed to instruct agency on its duty to act. This is like throwing wet noodles against the wall, waiting to see what falls off and what sticks. She is authorizing executive agents to act in a way that she says may be found invalid. But don't worry, the rest is still valid until it's found invalid, too. These clauses are found in private contracts between consenting parties, not executive agency action. So to wrap up, our communities are hurt by unconstitutional edicts from an abusive governor and government. Our businesses are dying in miserable death, and it's time to return to our way of life, emergency or not. Your oath is to the Constitution, not to Brown or any law. The Constitution established what is a just law. Laws from time to time, just like people, are fallible, corrupted by politics and power. You have a duty and an obligation to uphold the Constitution, and in turn, you hold true to your promise to the people that have consented to be governed. It's time to issue a stand. It's time to push back against an abusive governor. It's time to return to life, and it's time to protect our rights. It's time to tell Brown that her order is unconstitutional, and it is time to say that we will no longer comply." So that's my quick summary. I hope you guys will read the rest of that email and the nine items that I've listed as what are absolutely unconstitutional, and hope to hear from you with a response.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Soper. I have reviewed it. Couple thoughts real quick. A good analogy, putting wet noodles to the wall. So this is making a legal case as a citizen is the concept I'm seeing here. Others are able to hear your words and understand what you're saying by doing this public testimony right now, so I want to thank you very much for that. And then in the end, one of the thoughts I have is this is a matter for the courts, as in, you know, we really don't have the authority as a board to change these regulations. We've reviewed it also. So this isn't a back-and-forth public testimony on that, just a few thoughts on that. Any other statements that want to be said this time? Okay. Thank you so much for joining us.
Great, thank you.
So at this time, we may have other people that are interested in three-minute testimony to the Board of Commissioners, and we'd like you to use the raise hand feature in Zoom if you would like to do that. We're able to review that. There's a feature. It's a small button generally on the bottom center or bottom right of your Zoom login. I guess there's different ways it could be presented. And if there's a raise hand feature in the attendees list, we will offer to put you in the panelist and ask if you want to speak for three minutes on a subject that is not on the agenda. So at this time, I don't see any. I do have a few other items just to put in for public testimony. There's an email we received taking a position on proposed airstrip construction, a land use issue. It will be put in. The record will be a part of these minutes, and it'll be put in the record of that land use issue. Also, let's see here, another email referring to the distribution of the vaccine, and we're gonna hear a health update here pretty soon, so this will be put in the record also. So if anybody wants to read these in their entirety, they will be part of the follow-on record of this meeting. And we also received a voicemail, somebody responding to a news item about cleanup and garbage and homeless cans off of China Hat Road. You know, one statement. Thank you very much for that phone call. And then the statement is, yes, this is a problem in our community. Garbage just evolves quickly where people are transient lodging. At this time, were there any hands raised in the Zoom conference? I don't think there were. Good, so we're moving on to our consent agenda. At this time, we have...
Oh, I do have one.
Oh, please, yes.
Yes, of course. 10 years. Here's your plaque.
Oh, okay. Surprise.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Chair, DeBon, and here's an official letter. It's a vacation to, I'm sure, Portland.
That's right.
Oh, we're taking a picture? Together or like socially distanced? Yes, six feet?
The rock man picture.
Yes.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you so much. Oh, wonderful, thank you. Well, this will be nice to hang in my office. Congratulations for 10 years of service to Deschutes County, January 2021. So yes, two and a half terms, and I started to figure this out at the end, like last month. I was like, oh my goodness, I'm rounding up to 10 years in referring to that date. So you got sworn in a couple days ago, and I just hit 10 years anniversary, so honored to serve the citizens of Deschutes County. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Adair.
You're welcome.
And that was very much a surprise. I didn't even see that coming.
Well, I had it hidden.
Yeah, I guess so. At this time, Consent Agenda Approval Minutes for December 21, 2020. So this is last year, so Commissioner Chang wasn't a commissioner at that time.
So moved.
Yep, and I'll second it, just knowing that you weren't attendants of that, so any other discussion? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. At this time, action items, item number two, COVID-19 update. And this is from Nahad Sadrizodi. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us and Dr. Conway, our Director of Health Services, of course, online. I'm supposed to check in to make sure that we are streaming?
So yes, we have a valid Zoom conference, and then we're also able to start a Facebook Live stream, so that's what we're confirming right now, and it's coming in just one moment. Usually, we see another little red icon that pops up that says "Live Streaming," and this is valuable. I've had some feedback from some folks to be able to say they have viewed this video feed, a Facebook Live feed, and you can also watch it after the fact, so very good. We got a thumbs up in the back. We are ready to go.
Great. Well, Happy New Year, and thank you again for inviting us. Let me start off by congratulating Commissioner Chang, our newest Commissioner on board. Also, congratulations to Commissioner DeBon for being appointed as Chair and for 10 years of service.
Thank you so much.
And also, many thanks to Commissioner Adair for her leadership as Chair during a very difficult and tumultuous 2020. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadrizodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. I will be tag teaming with Dr. George Conway, who is the Director of Health Services. Many thanks to Jenny Faith for the great data analysis, to Morgan Emerson for some of the messaging, and of course, a huge thank you to our Health Services staff and community partners for their relentless efforts in responding to this pandemic, as well as delivering on other important non-COVID services. Before sharing the numbers, I would like to remind our communities that they can refer to our deschutes.org website and get the latest data on COVID-19, which are available in both English and Spanish. Also, state-level data, which have been reformatted and are more user-friendly, are available on the Oregon Health Authority website. This next slide summarizes the journey that Deschutes County has been on with regards to this pandemic since March 11. There have been critical decisions and important milestones that we have collectively experienced and endured throughout this pandemic. Some of these decisions and milestones have slowed down the transmission, and some have contributed to its increased circulation in our communities. Bottom line, I think the key message from my perspective is that there is a cause and effect to this pandemic and transmission rate. So far, the cumulative numbers as of yesterday stand at 4,276 cases, and unfortunately... Thank you, Dr. Conway, for reminding me to share this slide.
Yep, I was gonna step in and say I think you might be one. Yep.
Yeah, apologies. Thank you. Thanks for that. So so far, the cumulative numbers as of yesterday stand at 4,276 cases and unfortunately 24 deaths. We were experiencing a bit of flattening of the curve in recent weeks. This next slide shows the number of cases by week. Last week, 345 cases were reported. It's slightly higher than the previous week, but my understanding is that there were some glitches in the database, and some of the cases may or may not necessarily reflect this past week, but they were released and they were recorded in the past week. Overall, though, I would say that in the last five or six weeks, we are seeing and experiencing a persistent drop since our peak of 456 cases. This week so far, we have had 114 cases reported on Monday and Tuesday. This next slide is on the age distribution of patients. The data are consistent with previous weeks, as around 55% of patients are among young to mid-age adults. 20- to 29-year-olds continue to be the age group with the highest number of cases, comprising a little more than 1/5 of the total number of patients. This slide captures the testing capacity in Deschutes County. Beginning early December, as I have mentioned in previous weeks, Oregon Health Authority transitioned to reporting total tests rather than persons tested, which better reflects the total volume of tests for a county, but we have to also keep in mind that it may include duplicate positives and/or duplicate negatives for individuals. During the past week, there were nearly 9,000 total tests reported. Switching gears slightly, in recent weeks, there have been efforts at the state level in consolidating and simplifying the various metrics. This slide shows a risk-based framework for counties based on two key metrics, on case rates and positivity percentage. Counties are categorized based on risk levels of extreme high, moderate, and lower risk. These risk levels are established using essentially the same metrics that are used for schools. So similar to school metrics, the higher risk category determines the overall risk category for the county. The two mentioned indicators or metrics are also advisory, as I mentioned, for school reopening. The case rate of 325 per 100,000 in the last two weeks puts Deschutes in extreme risk The second metric of percent positivity puts the two-week percent positivity at 6.2, which is in the moderate risk level. Nevertheless, as I mentioned, the combination of the two metrics puts Deschutes County in the extreme risk level, which has implications for activities in our communities. And by the way, of course, as you can tell from this slide, we are not alone. Most Oregon counties continue to fall in the same category as Deschutes. In this slide, we are looking at a regional metric based on St. Charles Health System admissions. As of this morning, 11 of the 31 admissions are Deschutes County residents. As of yesterday, the Deschutes County ever hospitalized number stands at 154. Now, we have said for weeks now that there are usually a two-to-four week delay in cases and admissions that follow the number of reported cases. I believe this is my last slide before I hand over to Dr. Conway. This slide is the age distribution of Deschutes County hospitalized patients. Certainly, we see higher admissions above 60 years and older. However, younger patients are not necessarily exempted from severe disease and hospitalization. As mentioned already, as of yesterday, we've had 154 cases ever hospitalized.
So Nahad, that's actually today's number of 11 over 31. That's like 1/3 of the COVID patients in St. Charles are from Deschutes County.
Correct, Commissioner.
Okay, well, I just, you know, the fact that it is 154 cumulative, I noticed that you don't do the chart anymore, the percentage of hospitalization that we used to see. That might be something to bring back if Jenny has a moment.
Sure, sure. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, I will give the floor to Dr. Conway.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
George Conway, Health Services Director, and I'll echo Nahad's opening remarks. So congratulations, Commissioner Chang, on being a new member of the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner DeBon for ascending to Chair, and thanks again to Commissioner Adair for leadership during this last very challenging year. So I'm gonna talk about really three things. I'll talk about vaccination data. I will give a couple of sort of very basic science slides, talk about the implications of that, and then move on to some recommendations and actually venture into an opinion. of that, and then move on to some recommendations and actually venture into an opinion based on those. So, vaccination data, we're off to a reasonable start, as has been covered widely. Oregon has started distributing vaccination materials, including the vaccine itself and injection equipment, but it's been sort of a slow start. However, we are making real headway here. The majority of vaccinations have been given by St. Charles' system, largely for healthcare workers within their system. However, Health Services has leaned forward recently as well. So far, there have been over 2,600 people vaccinated, only two fully vaccinated, say, that have had a second dose. And then, our rate is, it's above average in the state, but it's still not very high, 135 per 10,000. Next slide, please. So, our highest priority is to vaccinate residents as quickly as possible. We received our first, the Health Department's first shipment of Moderna vaccine, which is one that does not require the ultra-cold storage. Last Wednesday, within 24 hours, we stood up a vaccine event and we vaccinated 170 persons, which included a wide variety of Health Services, key outward-facing staff, vaccinators, some community volunteer vaccinators, as well as a number of staff from urgent care clinics around the county. And we're coordinating with healthcare partners to increase capacity to vaccinate and to scale up as we receive more vaccines. Our instant command system, led by Commander Garbe, and in particular, Steve Strang, who's on detail from Mosaic Medical, and Jill Johnson, our own Jill Johnson, CD lead, are very, very active in leading this and doing an outstanding job of organizing this. Next slide, please.
Dr. Conway, I have mentioned several times that the pharmacies, the smaller pharmacies in Deshute County and Jefferson County need to be vaccinated, such as the one in Sisters, Lapine, and Madras. Apparently, it takes, what, six weeks to really acquire full immunity with the vaccines? And my pharmacist, my personal pharmacist, has been on the phone with me daily, and I really would like to see them vaccinated as soon as possible. I feel like the more, they have their, you know, the people that they deal with on a monthly basis, and I feel like they're a real asset to the community. And we also received a letter today from nurses in the area, volunteer nurses that would like to be part, because the governor has said we're going to do 12,000 vaccines a day, starting in two weeks, and at that rate, it'll take two years to get the entire state vaccinated. So, we really, hopefully, we're going to be able to step it up.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Dare. And germane to that, this summarizes where we are now in vaccination. And the professionals, you mentioned, pharmacists, particularly if they're doing vaccination, would fall in Phase 1A, which is healthcare workers. And we're currently working in the highest-risk, demerited highest-risk category, those hospitals, EMS, first responders, urgent care staff, vaccinators, and long-term care skilled and memory care. If indeed those pharmacists are doing vaccination, they should point that out as they register as providers and will do our best to ensure that they are vaccinated readily. Phase 2, Phase 1A Group 2 is residential care that's beyond long-term care and many other aspects of medical care, including hospice, behavioral health crisis, adult group homes. Phase 1A 3 is basically all other outward-facing clinical staff. They're providing services in higher-risk settings. And then, Group 4 is basically the entire balance of healthcare providers and staff. Next slide, please.
Question real quick. So, the terminology Phase 1A Group 1, 2, 3, is that at Deshute County? Is that a state standard that's starting to evolve? Or just the terminology?
No, no, no. Actually, this is, yeah, this is the state OHA policy, and there's a very detailed document, which is publicly available, 10 pages detailing, to great detail, who is demerited as belonging in each one. And the Health Departments are the sort of coordinators on the ground in doing this. The initial tranches of vaccine, as you know, were sent to tertiary care medical centers like St. Charles with the edict that they would vaccinate their critical care and high-risk staffs, such as those in Phase 1A Group 1, and then start sharing it with the community providers, and indeed, that is happening. And we're actively co-managing that vaccine, as well as the smaller amounts that are sent to the Health Departments. Next slide, please.
Thank you. Dr. Conway, can I just ask about the categories or those groups? If you have vaccines available for people in Group 1 and you make a time available for those people to come and get vaccinated, and for some reason, they're not able to get there, is it... Can people... Does that create opportunities for people in Group 2 to be vaccinated from that pool?
Yes.
That shipment of vaccine?
Yes, yes.
Or are you trying to get all the way through Group 1 first and then going to Group 2?
Well, we're doing our best to get through Group 1 first. However, in a circumstance like you're talking about, we have conditional vaccines that are on sort of a waiting list, they have an appointment later on, but that may be available as slots open up from people not being able to attend. So, we have a, one of our foremost principles is never to waste vaccine. So, if we have X number of people and X minus 3 show up, we will rapidly offer that to people that are nearby, that might be Group 1 and then Group 2. And also, we have people that are very eager and have made an appointment, but we will reach out to them as time permits, as soon as we hear that somebody won't be getting them.
That's great to hear that. You've always got people on deck.
Yes, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of demand for this, understandably. Certainly, a foremost question top of mind in the community, and we're getting a lot of these questions, very reasonably. When can I receive the vaccine? We're very grateful to many Deshute County residents have expressed how eager they are to receive this. As I mentioned before, currently, the Phase 1A is where we are, and those folks are being directly notified by their employers or their residential living facility. However, after that, we'll move on to Phase 1B, which is essential workers and with educators listed first, and then, after that, move on to elderly people with different criteria by different age, straight-up. And many of those people receive vaccine from doctors, a pharmacy, or community clinics.
It's the pharmacist in Group 4. That's what Diane keeps telling me, they're in Group 4, and yet, they have a lot of elderly people that live in Sisters that, you know, she wants to be able to help and make it convenient for them. So, that's why I don't understand they're down in 4, if the residents can be vaccinated in B, 2B.
The underlying principle of these straight-ups is risk stratification, which is well-established in tiered vaccination. I wish that we had such an abundance of vaccine that it could just be anybody that shows up. We're quite far from that right now. Just to close out this slide, Deshute County Health Services, as well as our health community, will continue to provide ongoing communications and coordination, and you can actually check on up-to-date notices about vaccine distribution on our, this page on our website, deshute.org/covid19vaccine. Next slide, please. So, this is sort of the basic science moment that I occasionally provide. There's an underlying concern that's been voiced since the beginning of the epidemic, but has really become top of mind just in the last few weeks. Viruses are, you know, they're not even technically fully alive, they're just pieces of information, unfortunately, bad information, that are encoded, and in this case, RNA, nucleic acid. And in the process of those being produced by their host, so in this case, COVID-19 is primarily humans, just as in any other genetic material, occasionally mistakes happen, and we call those mistakes mutations. The more, just as the more any other animal reproduces, the more viruses are replicated, the higher the frequency overall of mutations. So, if you have more reproduction of the virus, you're going to have more mutations. Most of those will be benign, some of them may actually weaken the virus's infectivity or pathogenicity, the seriousness of the illness it causes. However, some may increase those risks. So, one of the, there's something called antigenic drift, which is sort of the random error, and then antigenic shift, which is a little more drastic, and I think that distinction's very important here. But the idea is that, if you can see this slide, that, for example, COVID-19 has this, what's called the spike protein on the outside, which we're designing, antibodies to, as well as the vaccine, is training our bodies to recognize that spike protein. Over time, it is possible that some of that spike protein could modify its shape as the result of one of these mutations. Next slide. So, as I mentioned, that shape could change over time, and that would make it so that the antibodies might not be quite as effective, and if there's a wholesale change that continues to occur over time, it may require our changing either medicines or vaccines, which is one of the reasons why there's a reformulation of the influenza vaccine every year, using the four what are judged to be the most common and potentially pathogenic seravars around the world. And I think it's quite possible that we'll be doing that same sort of iterative management of the coronaviruses as we go forward. Next slide, please. The reason this has become top of mind is that in the last few weeks, perhaps the more alarming one could be the South African variant, and that 5.1-v2 is highly transmissible, but it also appears not to be as sensitive and may actually not be manageable by some of the antibody drugs that have been developed. So, this is very concerning. Next slide. And then, equally concerning, but for a different reason, the, what's called in shorthand, is S-strain, which has become the dominant strain in the UK and is now documented to have spread to many other nations. There have been a few sporadic detections of the S-strain in the United States. The closest to here, I believe, was in Colorado a couple days ago. This virus is not more pathogenic, it's not, doesn't make people sicker, but it's 70% more transmissible, and there's a great concern that it, its additional transmissibility may be because it's more durable in aerosol form, in the suspended form in the air, and it may actually travel further than the 2 meters or 6 feet that we've been using as a guideline. Indoors, it's thought to perhaps travel quite a bit more than that. So, this raises, please stick with this slide for a moment, this raises the threat of both more rapid transmission, but then going back to the sort of science material I showed, if you have more rapid transmission and you're failing to contain the virus, then you also have the possibility of having even more changes. So, this is a redoubled reason for why we must do our very best to contain the virus and its spread. And it's one of the reasons why Boris Johnson, the PM for the UK, announced a nationwide shutdown for the UK of anticipated six-week duration a couple days ago. I'm hoping that we can do a better job in our own country. However, if you look not so very far away, Los Angeles County, they're having a very high infection rates. Currently, the estimate is that a person is dying of COVID every 15 minutes currently in Los Angeles County. Next slide, please. So, you all have seen this slide before. The left is just a reminder of aerosols and that you can have, the virus can be entrained in very, very tiny water vapor droplets, which we exhale in very large quantity and can remain suspended in air for some time, especially if you don't have good cross-ventilation. And I won't go through the whole rubric on the right, where you've seen the stratification of different types of settings from low-risk to high-risk, but basically, as you prep people, as they are not masked, and as people either exercise more or talk or sing, the risk goes up. Next slide. So, we have had a number of questions about the, how many of the current and recent cases, and thank you, Commissioner Dare, for your reminder about this question yesterday. How many of our outbreaks and positive numbers are attributable to outbreaks in restaurants, breweries, and gyms? And we do, in the past, we have gathered quite a bit of information about that. Unfortunately, at this time, we're not able to gather detailed information on any routine basis. We're unable to provide an estimate of the number of cases who are exposed at restaurants, bars, and gyms currently, because questions about exposures in these settings are not built into the standard case investigation or tracking database that OHA requires us to use. And there's currently no mechanism to identify spread in these settings unless there's an identified outbreak, which would typically be among staff and would not likely include patrons. We're also currently unable to provide detailed information on outbreaks in restaurants, breweries, and gyms by implementing OHA's surge guidance. And the reason for that is the surge guidance directs us to work primarily on high-consequence settings, such as long-term care facilities, schools, shelters, and jails, which we are indeed doing. We do track large or otherwise notable outbreaks, but the threshold for those is five or more epidemiologically or demonstrably linked cases, and the data would likely be quite incomplete. The other factor is that currently, restaurants, breweries, and gyms are, many of them are either closed or experiencing limited operations, so outbreaks in these settings would likely be rare at this time and might only include employees rather than patrons, which we think is part of the substance of the question. Next slide, please. So, sort of stirring together these concerns about the continued transmission of the virus, the fact that there is much afoot, and the evidence for that is our case rates are quite high here, and the continuing concern about the transmissibility, particularly of the new strains of virus. This is just my interpretation of these data, and that is that our only sensible option is to reduce viral transmission as much as possible until vaccine coverage is brought. This will inevitably entail continuing constraints on human activities, including enterprises and social amenities, until rates fall substantially. As enterprises are being constrained to serve a public good, which is reducing transmission of a potentially lethal virus, we should, as a society, thank the owners and proprietors and provide compensation and accommodations for their losses, as well as do our very best to ensure adequate unemployment payments for their employees. Failure to do so will contribute to resentments and non-compliance with those structures. We may also have to take near-heroic and costly measures to enable the safe reopening of schools as soon as infection rates fall demonstrably. The aerosol nature of the virus transmission becoming clearer, these may include much more ventilation, high-volume air cleaning devices, and the ready availability of onsite COVID-19 testing for people who are symptomatic or have been exposed to COVID. And with that, I'll just resort to my often-used closing slide, please, which is... And with that, I'll just resort to my often-used closing slide, please, which is a reminder that the virus is afoot. If you're not wearing a mask, if you're indoors with other people that you don't live with, if you're in a crowded place, your risk goes up and the risk to others goes up from you. If you're wearing a mask, if you're outdoors, if you're maintaining at least six feet of space between people, the risk goes down. And we beseech everyone to do your best to act accordingly. Thanks very much.
Dr. Conway, can I go back and ask another question about vaccination? Many members of the public are expressing concern about the, and Commissioner Dare was just expressing concern about the pace of vaccination that's occurring. And I think that some of that is, you know, we're hearing stories at the national level, we're hearing stories at the state level. The slide you showed us showed that, you know, Deschutes County is in the top 10 in terms of rates of vaccination so far, and that's great to see. I'm wondering, what are the constraints on further increasing the pace and scale of vaccination for our community? Is it really a question of, you know, we're getting the vaccines in people's arms as fast as they're arriving here, and it's just a supply constraint? Or are there things that we can be doing in our community to increase that pace and scale?
I believe that we have shown considerable, there were some growing pains initially and some, say, clarification about the disposition of a large tranche of the Pfizer vaccine that was sent to the hospital and about that after it was used to vaccinate their key outward-facing staff and clinical staff, that the rest was to be available with the community, but that's been resolved. We've proven to be very nimble and rapid in the deployment of vaccine as it arrives. I expect to receive a call within 20 minutes or half an hour of when that box arrives, presumably sometime today, as it did midday last week. This is a supply chain problem. There's unfortunately throughout the epidemic, there's been a chronic pattern, if you look at testing, if you look at PPE, of overpromising and underdelivering. This has been a real problem. It appears to be manifesting the same way in vaccinations. Mercifully, we do have Operation Warp Speed, which is pre-producing very large quantities of vaccine. So we're hoping that the supply chain failure or relative failure right now is not at the manufacturing point, but distribution. Because if it's a manufacturing, it's probably hard to hurry that up anymore. But if it's just distribution, we're hoping that that will be resolved. I know that the nation's governors are pressing very hard for this to happen. And there's a lot of very dedicated people throughout HHS, even the military's been involved in some of the deployment, that are doing their very best to push this. But this is a supply chain problem, and I don't think there was maybe enough attention to logistics planning and the distribution setting up a very well-defined, active, reticulate distribution network, as one would hope for in such a setting. But we're building it now, but it is entirely a supply chain problem.
Can you give us a sense of kind of the schedule of shipments that you're expecting? Like kind of how frequently or, you know, at least the next couple and how much?
Really, really not. I cannot. We received an allocate, so we received our first, so I should clarify, there's two principal recipients currently in the county, but those numbers are increasing. So two weeks ago, the only entity which had received vaccine was the Pfizer Ultracold vaccine had come to St. Charles Health Center, Health System. Last week, there was a very large shipment of the Pfizer vaccine sent to St. Charles Health System. And early last week, we were notified, I think it was on Tuesday, that we would receive our first small shipment of 500 doses of Moderna. We received that midday Wednesday, and we're putting it in arms by midday Thursday and expended all of it within three business days. St. Charles has stepped forward to start distributing and immunizing persons in the community, particularly urgent care centers, as well as EMS, other first responders, and we've been doing the same in health services. This week, we were looking forward to, we were hoping it would be much more than 500. What we were, the word we received yesterday is that we will receive only 300 doses today. The good news is that the federally qualified health center in this part of Deschutes County, Mosaic Medical, which also serves Crook and Jefferson, will be getting a few hundred doses directly. And Levine Community Health Center, I believe, is slated to get 100 doses as well, hopefully today or tomorrow. There is additional vaccine coming, but we don't have any way of predicting how much that will be or when. We get basically forenotice the day prior to the shipment. There is an opportunity for counties to ask for amendments to this, but at this time, they're entirely, amendments to what one's allocation is, but at this time, they're entirely limited by supply chain.
And do you have any sense of that between the two vaccines, the Pfizer and the Moderna, like any sense of what ratio of each will be getting in the future? Or is it really up in the air?
No.
It doesn't sound like it matters that much. You know, if St. Charles is working actively to do community immunizations, it doesn't, maybe it doesn't matter that, you know, they're the only ones who can store the Pfizer vaccine and...
Well, both of those vaccines are approved under emergency use authorization by the FDA. They were approved within a week or two of each other. They've both been doing advanced production at scale for months. Our hope is that there will be large quantities of both. We're doing our best. We have a, we're having the bifurcated planning or dual fork planning where we figure out how to manage and share and help the health system, St. Charles move vaccine rapidly, as well as whatever we receive, trying our best to basically fill in the cracks. Now, if Moderna starts flowing in similar rates to the Pfizer, then we will be much more heavily involved in the actual distribution and just working very closely with community partners. And then the county, our staff, and ICS are the providers, and the inoculator is the last resort. So we're preparing to, on a contingent basis, to be able to inoculate very, very large quantities of people starting soon. And we hope the vaccine arrives to be able to do that.
So Dr. Conway, last night I'd emailed Tom Anderson about the vaccination originally. You had said that they were going to hold half of the vaccines for the second dose, but that has now changed and we're not holding, correct? So that more people are actually vaccinated?
Yes, Commissioner, I do not recall saying that. I do recall...
I do.
I do recall passing along that St. Charles had informed us that they understood that they should hold doses for the second dose. That matter was resolved within one day by St. Charles, us, and OHA communicating. And the instruction was to no longer do that. And that was last week before we received any of our vaccine. The current instruction is that there will be a demeritation for second doses that's explicit. So St. Charles is expected to receive, there's a three-week delay built in because the Pfizer is on that, to be able to have it in hand in time to plan for the booster dose. So they are slated, I believe, I haven't received confirmation for this, but they should be slated to get second doses this week, concomitant with the original shipment that they received, which was slightly under 1,000. And then each week, the intent by OHA is to provide doses for second doses on that sort of delay. So we're being asked to go ahead and administer all vaccine received until we are told that some of it is to be held just briefly for the second dose.
Great. Good question.
Yeah, if I could ask one more question? So as you heard with the public comment, public testimony coming in, we received a message from two retired nurses who were interested in volunteering to help with, you know, to help administer vaccinations. And if we become aware of people like that, or if they contact the county commission, how should we get them in contact with you or plug them into the system?
Please send them our way. We have reactivated the Public Health Reserve system. Persons that are either currently or previously licensed medical professions, professionals are easily enrolled in that. We're also working with volunteers in Madison to try to figure out a way that they can come in as a group and be enrolled as ancillary vaccinators as well, working with our system. But anyone that's interested should go on our website, and I understand there's a link there for the Public Health Reserve Corps enrollment process. And if anyone does not find that or has any trouble, they should reach out to our health information officer, Morgan Emerson. And Morgan will pass that along to the Instant Command System. We have people working in the Instant Command System to rapidly enroll such volunteers. And we really encourage, and I greatly appreciate your asking about that, we really encourage anybody that's worked in the past, either clinically, in health, to so volunteer. And then we also can use people that have solid administrative or clerical skills, probably by a different pathway, as volunteers to help with the very complicated clerical business of enrolling and following up and making appointments for people.
And those people should also sign up through the Public Health Reserve system?
I think the Public Health Reserve Corps is primarily for individuals that have prior medical or current medical licensure. There's an alternative mechanism, and I'm sorry I don't recall it, but we are developing that pathway for people with other skills that can help support the process.
We do have an opportunity on our website, deschutes.org/jobs. There's a volunteer section, it sounds like, yeah, I was just reminded. And that'll be an opportunity, deschutes.org/jobs, volunteer, then that'll be a process to be able to onboard people.
Yes, yes. And that, we're doing our best to build that out. ICS Commander Garabey told me this morning that we have a whole team working on developing the volunteer band. And we had a large, actually, Commander Garabey and I had a long discussion today about the suitable ratios of employed to voluntary staff. We don't want to have volunteers just having to go out there and doing things on their own.
Well, this will be a point in time where if all of a sudden vaccine flows by the truckload, it'll be, yeah, a community effort to make sure it's distributed and utilized as efficiently as possible.
Sure. We, and Commissioner, to further flesh that out, we're looking at multiple possible venues for mass vaccination events and processes, including the fairgrounds, including possibly fire stations, the things that those of us who are old enough remember in polio schools, et cetera. So there's many possible venues, and we're trying our best to be ready for scale up on a very rapid basis whenever that does happen.
Yep. And that just gets right back to that terminology, you know, the phase A1 or whatever. As long as we start to put a system together, some terminology that we can all agree upon, then all of a sudden it starts to move more systematically. This is it. Time to make some plans. Thank you very much for the update today.
Thanks very much, Commissioners. Thanks for your support. Take care.
With that, we'll move to the next item, which is number three, CARES Act funding update. This will be Greg Munn. We've been provided a spreadsheet currently updated. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is for the record Greg Munn, County Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. Let's have a brief update for you on the CARES Act funding. As, I'll mention this for Commissioner Chang's benefit, but this is a weekly update that I give to the board on the status of the allocation of our original CARES Coronavirus Relief Fund allocation. And I typically send that email out the day before board meeting and follow up with a hard copy in your mailbox as for review for today. The only update to the allocation was from last week. As you might remember, there was a...
For your benefit, it sounds like you may have your papers on the microphone sliding around or something. Just letting you know.
Appreciate that. I'll move them off to the side. So as you might remember from last week, there was a $50,000 reduction in the allocation for testing because we believed that, or at the time, it was not certain whether or not the CARES Act funding would be extended beyond December 30th. We've since learned that it's been extended one year to December 31st of 2021. And last week, the board reallocated that $50,000 back to testing, but split it $35,000 to Dr. Young and $15,000 to Mosaic. So that's the only update on the worksheet that you have in front of you. Again, we're fully allocated. Most of the funds have been either spent or have been committed so far. And we will be submitting our next round of reimbursement. This will be for payroll-related costs through the end of December. We'll be submitting that by the end of this week. So I'll have another update for you, a significant update for you next week on Wednesday as well. I just also wanted to give you a heads up that we are continuing to monitor the status of potential future funding. And at this point, we have no commitments other than what I've reported in the past. One of those is, one of the possible funding instruments will be through the last legislative session where $400 million was obligated to the E-Board for pandemic response. And the E-Board is meeting this Friday, the 8th, at 1:00. So I'll be on that call, watching the meeting and following the agenda, and should have an update for you after that as well. We continue to collect costs, even though some of these funding mechanisms haven't come to fruition yet, but we're continuing to collect our costs as we were before so that in the event when they do become available or as a last resort through FEMA, we'll be able to seek reimbursement for pandemic response costs. That's my update. Is there any questions?
I saw that in the new COVID relief bill that came through Congress, there was, I'm not going to remember the right number, but I want to say $22 billion for testing, contact tracing, and other kind of, you know, direct containment efforts. When will we get a sense of how that translates to a state allocation and then, you know, potentially to a county allocation? I know that prior to that bill passing, there, I was hearing concerns from the health services staff about, you know, being able to continue supporting contact tracing at the level that we have been. So, yeah, I mean, so for a really specific need like that, I'm curious how we are, if contact tracing was being heavily funded by federal dollars and those have now essentially been all allocated out, like how are we covering contact tracing right now?
Yeah, Commissioner Chang, that's a really good question. And we sort of covered that in the past, but I'll just bring you up to speed on that. Your first question on when we'll know that, how that allocation is coming down and what format, we don't know yet, or I don't know yet. That's news that we're paying attention to as we move forward. But I can tell you that health services, for all of the wraparound services and activities that have been in place before December 30th, that were funded through a, either through some combination of these funds that we're talking about right now and other COVID relief funds that... and other COVID relief funds that they receive from the state directly, that we have funding to continuous activities for three months. So we're, we're covered for now, um, and, uh, this will give us, this will keep the, this will keep, keep the train moving down the tracks.
So it'll be evolving pretty quick as it happens, though. We know that the federal government is, uh, you know, working on this distribution plan, I'm sure. Okay, thank you very much, no decisions today, uh, yeah, kind of a quiet period in the distribution because we've, we did so well getting it out the door.
Yep, exactly, and I'll be back, uh, to you as soon as I know more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Item number four, 2021 Environmental Health Licensing. We received a one-page, uh, bullet pointed items for this, um, and we've done a little bit of li- environmental health licensing fee reimbursements already this year for this last very dynamic year.
Commissioners, I can introduce this a little bit. Like, I think Eric Moni, uh, from Environmental Health is, uh, ready to speak to this, but, uh, as you all know, you've received some communication, uh, and otherwise, uh, heard from, uh, some, uh, restaurant establishments who are, um, um, in a tough spot right now, uh, and have been since the pause we've put into place. Simultaneously, you know that, uh, our annual restaurant license, uh, invoices went out earlier this fall before the pause, um, so we were asked to, you know, look at, uh, our current situation, what our options are. Um, as Commissioner DeBoeun mentioned, we, you did provide a 60% refund on 2020, uh, licenses, uh, which I know was very much appreciated. So now with the new ones for 2021, uh, out there, um, again, uh, having received some feedback on those, uh, we asked Eric to kind of take a look at, um, what, what options, uh, the Board might have in terms of, uh, you know, looking at the current situation and into 2021. So I see Eric there, and I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you for joining us, Eric.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, uh, uh, congratulations, Commissioner Chang, on your election to the Board. Please reach out to me, uh, anytime with, uh, questions about our environmental health programs. Uh, for the record, I'm Eric Moni, uh, Dishoots County Environmental Health Supervisor. Uh, Public Health Manager Tom Kuhn has joined, um, uh, in case we have to have any budget discussions, uh, he's very familiar with our environmental health budget, uh, can fill in some of the details there. So just wanted to share a brief, uh, background. I have a slide that I'll read from, and I don't know if I, I could probably try to share this slide.
We do have it available to us up front here, but yeah, if you could share it, that'd be good for people to see also.
All right.
There it is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we currently, uh, license and inspect around 1,500 businesses, um, and, and those include restaurants, food trucks, pools and spas at all the hotels, motels, and, and resorts in the county, as well as the, uh, tourist accommodation program, which includes the, um, hotels, motels, and RV parks and campgrounds. Um, these licenses expire every year on December 31st, and that's in statute across this, this state. Um, so if somebody gets licensed in June, uh, for a new restaurant, for example, the, the license expires December 31st, and, and that's in statute as, as noted. Um, so every year, we send the invoices out to these businesses around the beginning of November, and this year it was around November 10th, we sent out the invoices. Uh, we did not know there was going to be, um, a freeze, uh, from the latest executive order, uh, that started the 18th, uh, which severely limited, um, indoor dining at, uh, restaurants, closed down indoor pools. Um, so that was, that was a pretty huge impact. The timing was terrible, um, but we just, we just didn't have an inkling or, or an understanding that, that this, uh, executive order was going to have that impact, one of many impacts that these businesses have, uh, have gone through in 2020, um, and, and continuing now into this year. So we sent the invoices out, and that, uh, led to a response from many of the licensed facilities, mostly restaurants, um, that, that had any number of requests from, can we make payments, can you waive late fees? I can't pay you anything because I haven't been open and I don't have any money. Um, can you help us the way you helped us in 2021? And I'll, I'll talk about that in, in a minute. Um, so whether it was, uh, calls or office visits, um, or letters, um, as the Commissioners have received some of those, um, or, or emails, uh, saying, can you help us? Um, it's, it's, it's been unlike any year we've ever seen. Um, typically every January, even in a non-pandemic state, um, margins are pretty thin for, uh, food service establishments in particular. Um, and so even in a good year, in January, there are, are several businesses that are saying, we, we can't pay. And so, um, it isn't statute that you have to be licensed, and part of the license that gets issued every year is, um, is you have to pay the fee, uh, that, that, that we have. So, uh, moving on to the next bullet point, um, in 2020, the Board very generously, uh, reimbursed 60, 60% of the licensing fees for all food pool lodging facilities. Um, and that was from the federal CARES grant, um, and that provided, uh, that 60% of the license fee for all of those licensed facilities, um, which was, which was great. And, and they have, um, time and time again thanked us for that. Uh, they said that it doesn't pay all the bills, but they, they, they thought it was an incredibly kind gesture, and so I thank the Board again for that.
Eric, Eric, I just want to point out that that 60% was $547,236, 547,236. So it was, it was a huge check. I know that Jefferson County, I believe they refunded 100%, but, you know, we are such a tourist economy here in Dishoots, I, I feel like that was essential, and I, I'm glad they were appreciative, but it was over half a million dollars.
Yes, and Jefferson County obviously has a whole lot less, um, licensed facilities than we do, and, and they were reimbursed 100% of their fees, which amounted to about $45,000. So, um, it, so the scale is, is quite a bit different here, and, and it was just a huge, uh, boost to the morale of many of these businesses that the Board did that in 2020. So, uh, it, as far as the actual administration of licensing, so now we're, we're in the first week of January, and, uh, many places are not licensed right now technically because they haven't paid their, their fees. Also, in statute, uh, there's supposed to be a, a late fee or a reinstatement fee of the license, um, that starts January 1st, and while that's in statute, uh, I've heard anecdotally from several other environmental health departments across Oregon that they are not charging late fees. Uh, I think given the unprecedented, uh, situation, given a global pandemic, that, uh, pretty extraordinary circumstances, I, 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 I would like to not wave the wand, I don't have that kind of power, but I, 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 it's my hope that we can waive those late fees and enter into a discussion of, well, when, when would they have to pay their licensing fees, even if we do, uh, have the, the ability to waive the late fees? Um, so I'll skip to the last bullet, and then we can go to the, second to the last bullet. The last bullets talks about, um, the actual revenue comparison to kind of say, well, what was happening last January compared to this January? And right now, the pools and, and spas and tourist accommodations have done an incredibly great job of, of paying before December 31st. Where we're seeing, uh, the hit is to the restaurants. We have about 161 restaurants that aren't licensed at, at this moment, um, and, and so that, they're, they're the ones who we've been really hearing from the most. Um, and so, uh, I just, I just am throwing those, that little, that history out of where we're at right now, and opening up a discussion, uh, for license fee assistance options for 2021. Um, and this isn't something that has to be obviously answered today, but I just wanted to, to kindly ask the Board, um, uh, how they felt about this, because I know that you've been getting a lot of feedback also from these businesses.
So if 161 haven't paid, how many did pay?
Well, uh, that's about 20% of the total restaurants, uh, the brick and mortar restaurants, um, about 20% of them didn't pay, so 80% did pay.
Okay, and then you've taken into account the restaurants that have actually permanently closed, then?
That has been a really tough one to determine. We've had, um, different questions from people saying, how, how many restaurants have closed? How many businesses, uh, that you license, how many of them have closed? And they have such limited operating hours and different, uh, strategies to stay afloat. Their hours are different, um, their days of operation are different. Sometimes they'll close for a week and then reopen, uh, sometimes they have different operating hours than we've ever seen, so when we stop by and they're closed, um, we, we think they're closed for good, but then a week later they're open. So it's been really hard to determine, you know, on a, on a percentage or ratio of, of how many have actually closed. And the other thing is, when one restaurant closes, um, there are other people that, that come in behind them, um, and, and, and say, hey, I want to reopen this restaurant, and that doesn't happen every time. You can drive around town and see all the shuttered, uh, restaurants. So it's, it's, I, I wish Commissioner Adair could give you a hard number on that.
Very dynamic, I'm sure. So, uh, the big picture is we want to have, uh, safe food preparation, supply, simple education, good relationship with the, uh, restaurant owners, so I'm just getting, you know, getting grounded in the great work that we've, we've done, your, your department, uh, really making those relationships out there. Uh, it's, um, a, a great reminder to understand the scope of this relative to Jefferson County, that this is, this is kind of, uh, a whole industry, you know, very, very big industry in, in Dishoots County. Um, and then understanding that 20% number, that I was, that's less than I, I would assume just without having that before you had shared that information. So it's good that there is people out there that are be able to, able to provide that license fee. Uh, so this is kind of starting the discussion. You, you mentioned that, uh, you know, may, we may or may not make any decisions on this even today, uh, but it's going to be an opportunity for us to partner, to make sure there's a, a safe, prepared food supply. Any thoughts?
Um, well, I, I'm guessing I speak for all three of us when I say we, you know, we feel for this industry.
Oh, yeah.
Um, this is, I, I was just thinking about how, how a business, you, you know, you look at a fee like this, and, uh, a, a business like a restaurant, uh, they may not be thinking about spreading out the cost of that fee over the year. They may be most, you know, they may be thinking most about how much, uh, they can absorb that fee within their, within their revenue in the first couple of months of the year. And, um, you know, that they're in a horrible, uh, situation right now in terms of, in terms of operations. So, um, I, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to, I, to this requ- uh, I'm very sympathetic to the request for assistance, and I, um, I, I don't have a good sense, like a, a full sense yet of, uh, some of the things that, uh, you know, some of the factors that I'd need to understand to be able to, to, to vote on something that, you know, I, I'd like to understand a little bit more about, um, how we would cover the costs of operations of the Environmental Health Division, if, you know, if we were to grant some assistance. Uh, I'd like to have a sense of, um, uh, yeah, uh, uh, you know, whether there are, you know, whether there are reserves, or whether there, you know, uh, environmental health has kind of rolling funds, um, at this point in the fiscal year to, to, to cover their costs. Um, it'd be great to have a sense of, of, you know, kind of how much, uh, you know, what the, you know, what, like an estimate of the dollar amount of, of, you know, what the, what the impact of this is. Um, and also just, um, I, I, I think I said this at first, uh, what are, you know, where we could, where we could cover these ca- our, our costs from? Um, and, you know, going back to the, the question I just asked, uh, Greg Munn, you know, but it, it, if we, if we were able to grant assistance previously out of federal, federal support, then, um, and we don't know what, whether there's going to be continued federal support for a little while, like, um, yeah, where, where else we could, um, cover these, cover these costs from, because I, I think it's a very worthwhile thing to, to invest in.
Eric, I wanted to thank you for your letter that you sent on December 18th to support the breweries and restaurant industry in Dishoots County in our climate. Um, I don't know if you've heard back from those people, but, um, we sent a following letter on Monday, the 21st of December, saying, please, look at the CDC rules that the State of Colorado adopted, which has a incredibly similar climate to ours, where four seasons can be in the morning, and it can be in the afternoon again. So, you know, we are so trying to help those people, I know that they are hemorrhaging money, and honestly, I'm not sure how much longer some of them are, will be able to survive. You know, we've got to improve our vaccination rollout and everything, but I definitely feel like the state needs to come back and look at those rules, which we have suggested to them. Um, they clearly did not, um, recognize that we have a different climate over here than Salem. And I think it's really important that that recognition is done, um, much sooner than later. I don't know, is it possible for those 20% for us to postpone it till the end of March? I mean, is that something we could legally do? Has anybody looked into that? I know, I mean, I, I get to go food all the time, and I ate, uh, lunch the other day, and it was 25 degrees out. And, um, you know, they're spending money on tents, on heaters, on propane, on firewood, I mean, all the things that our businesses are doing in order to keep their family of employees still working, it's, it's, um, it's heartbreaking when you see what's going on in Dishoots County, and what is it that we as, you know, the County Commissioners can do to help?
Well, Commissioner Adair, you're, you're exactly right, and while we're in an extreme risk category, uh, I believe the freeze will, will be on, and we will be status quo until we can revert back to a, a high risk. Uh, many restaurants are-
Eric, do you realize that we did 9,000? Eric, we did 9,000 tests last week, 9,000. I mean, originally, we were talking about maybe doing 900, and we're up to almost 9,000. So yes, I know, I know we're in a high-risk category, but so is much of the state.
Yes, and, and a lot of the restaurants have tried to evolve and morph and reinvent their business model, um, and the outdoor enclosures, technically, according to the Oregon Health Authorities, 75% of that enclosure is supposed to be open. Um, and, and so it's been a real challenge for them to follow those rules and keep people warm. Um, just more expense in buying these enclosures, they're incredibly expensive, and the heaters and the propane, um, and in the meantime, they, they can't put enough bodies in there like they did before, uh, to, to generate the revenue, to keep the lights on and pay the mortgage and pay their staff. Um, and if I could just, uh, turn it over to Tom Kuhn, I believe, Tom, you had a, a budget note you'd like to share?
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, my name is Tom Kuhn, I'm the Community Health Manager for Dishoots County Health Services. And, um, in these discussions, you know, we've been talking about the businesses that haven't been able to pay their fees, but I think we have to keep in mind, uh, there's a lot of businesses that have paid their fees despite all these struggles, and if we're going to provide, uh, support to our restaurants, we also, uh, should consider, uh, providing support to those restaurants that have paid. And I have, um, an analysis here, um, actually, I'm sorry, that was, clicked the wrong window there. Um, others. So I, just today, this morning, to get the best accurate picture of where we're at, I was going to do like the first six months of last fiscal year and this fiscal year, and rather than doing it through, uh, December 31st, I thought it was good to, you know, give it, uh, as much time as possible after the New Year's, because often there's a delay in getting the numbers entered into our, uh, budgeting system, and- And as of this morning, we actually are ahead in our three major categories in revenues brought in for the different license fees. Restaurants, which includes mobile units, pools and spas and tourist facilities, in each of those categories, we are ahead. And then our total revenues, we're actually about $4,000 ahead of where we were at, at this time last year. So there, we just want to point out, there are many businesses who have paid their fees, but they are struggling because of all the different things they must do to remain open during COVID. And also, the other point I wanted to make is what we're not seeing here is the impact of the businesses that haven't paid their fees, which we'll probably see if we look at these numbers in a month from now. So right now, we're seeing where we're at, at this time, but I think in a month, it's going to be a different story. So I just thought this would be something good to consider for the conversation.
One of my thoughts is possibly kind of breaking up the year and thinking of it as two parts here. And I don't know if we have the authority, if, you know, if it's a one fee, one payment deal, you know, there's talk about late fees, but is there a way to kind of think of this as two halves of the year? That may be very helpful because as I say, by the end of this year, people may be switching gears. And I'm thinking the difference between our fiscal year, June 30th to July 1st, and then this calendar year for the, for the bill to go out. So maybe break this problem into two would be a, a way to, to proceed also.
Commissioner, if, if, if I can jump in here. The, as you know, or you may recall from our budget for the current year, it is not balanced currently with fees in environmental health. There is a built-in subsidy of undesignated transient room tax that was a choice made by the Budget Committee and the Board this year to balance the EH budget for fiscal '21. So we have some flexibility in that subsidy in order to balance the fund long-term. Also, as you heard from Greg Munn in the previous item, there's still some uncertainty on whether there will be additional relief coming from either the state or federal government in terms of some discretion that may fall to the Board in applying any assistance that comes into things like restaurant fees, which you elected to do with the previous allocation of CARES Act. Hopefully we'll know that information soon, within the next few weeks and on whether you have some relief you can offer there. As Eric said earlier, I, I don't know that we were expecting a, a final answer, a, a permanent proposal today for, you know, this issue in front of you. We certainly appreciate your concern and desire to want to provide help. I think what we, we, we can do, as Eric suggested, is bring back to you, you know, a more, I guess polished list of your options for this current, both fiscal year budget and calendar year license period for the, you know, while being certainly equitable, as Tom appropriately pointed out, to, you know, each of the restaurants, those that have paid and those that haven't yet, so that whatever you do is, is balanced and, and fair, you know, across the entire group of licensees that we're talking about today. So we can, as soon as we're ready, within the next week, two weeks, once we have more information, we can bring that back to you with a clear list of policy considerations for you. In the meantime, again, your, your input today, certainly with respect to late fees, I don't know that we'd begin charging them anytime soon, but that's, that's important information to know in terms of the likelihood of relief coming for those that are currently in that situation, you know, without a, you know, being faced with charges in addition to their regular license number.
Yeah, well, and just understanding that 1,500 businesses, 160 not paid, not paid at this time, and revenue up relative to last year is interesting, or, you know, total pays. So we've got a scope of the issue at this point in time.
I should, I should point out one thing, Commissioners, that 323 total haven't paid, 161 was specifically the restaurants. So I just wanted to, to, to point that out.
And we could have, yeah, more detail in a, in a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I can just ask one more question. Tom, you mentioned that, and I, I think I tracked this from earlier, that we're using transient room tax revenues to, you know, to, to, to make environmental health, to, to balance environmental health this year. And my impression is that, you know, from, from the mid-year budget committee meeting, that TRT is one of the revenue sources that is coming in higher than we had, we had forecasted for this year. I mean, we, we don't know what will happen, you know, the rest of the fiscal year yet, but, you know, assuming that TRT is, you know, stays at a higher level than, than forecasted, that seems like a great, a great place to, you know, essentially, you know, provide this assistance, subsidize this, this, this need in our community from, to, to me. So as, as you're preparing those options, I, I would love to see that as one of the options if, if it, if it's financially appropriate.
Well, and I do see this as, you know, governor's executive orders seasonal, because we could be switching gears, you know, in the springtime and some restaurants will have the elbow room to be able to serve, other ones won't, just because the way they're set up. But also, there's, there's just the industry, you know, the renewed excitement about entrepreneurialism is going to come back sooner or later. You know, right now, it's, it's, it seems like it's a far way off, but, I mean, the opportunities, the people moving, the people wanting to be, you know, go out to dinner or, or tourist opportunities, there'll be an upside to this in the future. You know, we don't know how far out it is. Great, well, good information. Yeah, hopefully the industry, anybody following this understands that we're taking it seriously. We want to help, you know, the, the hardworking people at their restaurant and tourist and lodging operations.
I would just like to point out at this moment, because the sheet Eric says, environmental health would like to waive the 2021 late fees. So that, is it all legally possible? I think that's something that we could say today. I, I really support that.
I, I would support that as, yeah, I'm not sure procedurally whether we're allowed to decide or make votes on, on things like that today, but I, I would be supportive of that as well.
Well, so for clarity though, so there's a, you know, X amount of restaurants, some doing business without a valid restaurant license at this point in time. So that, I mean, that's a kind of a catch there also. So what does that mean? You know, you haven't paid it, you don't have a license and we're not paying you a fee, but you're working outside. So, I, because I've thought down that path too. Are we ready to make a decision? I, I don't know.
And maybe, maybe by offering assistance, particularly as Tom said, equitably across, you know, those who've paid and who haven't paid, if you can bring down the fee, the fee that needs to be collected low enough that it, maybe it puts it more within reach of, of everybody.
So would it be valuable to give guidance to waive fees at this time? I guess, you know, kind of back to, what would that really mean legally?
Well, I think we're talking about late fees as opposed to--
Late fees, yep, very specifically, yes.
Yeah, and I know Eric has talked to Dave Doyle, I think Dave's on the line also in terms of if that's an appropriate action for the Board to take today and say a minute order, just in terms of waiving late fees for 2021. I defer to Dave on that question.
So there's 323 businesses then that are in the late fee category now on the 6th of January?
Yeah, some of those are mobile food units who, the, the food cart, for example, is in their garage and they, and they don't bring it out until Earth Day or Balloons Overbend or, or till the first event. We don't charge them until they actually start operating. But the one thing that we do know is there's 161 restaurants that haven't paid their license. And I would say many of them, if not 90% of them, are operating currently without a license. So, yeah, that's, that's, there could be some exposure there if there's an outbreak with an unlicensed restaurant. And so that's obviously a question we deal with every January. It could be exacerbated this year when that continues into February or March and they're still operating without paying their license. And then late fees is something I could probably turn over to Dave, because I know he and I have had some good, good discussions about that as well.
And when would late fees be applied or how do they get notified of a, well, so yeah, when they go to pay, maybe there's another fee on top of it?
Yeah, we send them invoices electronically and via snail mail and calls and, and blast emails saying, hey, now, now here's the invoice again with a, with a late fee as well.
Is that scheduled for two weeks, end of the year, or a month, or has it done--
Well, we haven't, we haven't sent it out this year. We, we wanted a way, it just seemed especially punitive to, to do that at this, at this time.
So as I say, I mean, I'm not opposed to what we're saying here, but I don't know exactly what it means, you know, so.
So Dave, do you have a, a feedback on this? Because I know on property taxes, we weren't able to waive late fees. I'm just wondering, is it possible to waive the late fee on this legally?
A strict reading of the statute as well as a strict reading of our contract that we have with OHA would preclude that. Whether these unique times we're in and kind of in accord with some of the executive orders the governors issued and the breadth of those, whether the Board would feel comfortable stepping into a, a role of, of waiving fees that otherwise statutorily and contractually we don't have the ability to waive, that's going to be for the Board. I mean, I, I doubt that's what you wanted to hear, but as Eric and I have been dealing with this for a month or more, it's just, it's very difficult to pass pretty clear language that, that essentially jurisdictionally ties the payment of the fee and subsequently the late fee to the issuance of a license itself. And so again, I, I guess it really comes down to, you know, if the Board feels these are such unique situations that, that the Board independently can deviate from, from the statute. I know Eric's had communications with OHA and they've been pretty black and white in the response that, no, you can't do that and we're not going to do that. So that's kind of where it's at at this point.
But Eric did make a comment earlier when he was speaking that elsewhere, they're not charging late fees. I think that's what he said with people that he was talking to. That was my note that I just wrote.
I, I think that, Commissioner Adair, I think they're going down the road of it's better to beg forgiveness and ask permission. And I think that the Oregon Health Authority has a lot of things going on at this time and I, I, I don't want to say they're looking the other way, but I, I mean, it's, it's a slippery slope. And, and, and that's why I, I'm not smart enough to figure out all the answers myself. So I appreciate that, the discussion on how we can potentially get around late fees and, and what to do with licensed facilities that may not have a license well into 2021.
Commissioners and I would suggest that maybe you defer this until next week and we'll try and answer both those questions.
Yeah, I mean, that's possible, because there was--
What just mentioned is probably more important is, you know, potentially not having a license. If there was a way to, say, defer initial payment of the, you know, the license fee itself, so that they get a license and are able to be inspected to ensure public safety is probably the, you know, primary concern here and as well as the financial impact to the restaurant. So we can kind of put our heads together and answer, you know, frame both those questions for you properly. We could bring this back and possibly next week or the week after, if, if necessary, for some final discussion and decisions.
Yeah, there was support basically, but is that appropriate? Are you comfortable with that?
It would be, I mean, I would love to provide assistance to, to these folks as soon as possible, but, but, yeah, we can only do so much with the information that we have right now, so.
Commissioner Adair?
Right, well, when is the late fee normally tacked on their bill? Is it today?
January, January 1st.
Okay. So clearly in the email that went out to them on the 10th of November, it said, you must pay this by the end of December or you will have a late fee tacked on. And then of course--
Correct.
And of course then they were shut down. So such a world we live in.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of, yeah, just thinking through this a little deeper and, I mean, I'm supportive also. It's not like I wasn't, but what are we doing here specifically? So, yeah, let's, thank you very much for the discussion. Let's get a little bit more deep knowledge on what we can do and support those, you know, and some of them may be walking away, so, I mean, maybe it's not even 160, just like you say. So some of them are open or closed, maybe, yeah, we'll find out. I don't want to speak for any of them, but--
Thank you, Eric.
There we go. Thank you so much. Next item, we're about a half hour behind of a proposed schedule, but presentation, Proposed Regional Emergency Services and Training Coordination Center. Do we call it the RETSI? RETSI? So Tom, it's going to--
Yeah, no, again, Commissioners, thank you. I, I'm merely going to introduce this item a little bit. I know we're, we are running a little behind. Hopefully the folks that were lined up to speak to this are still on Zoom and available. But that would be Sheriff Nelson, I think, was scheduled, as well as Sergeant Garabee and Scott Akok from COIC. There's our fine sheriff right there, as well as Scott.
There they are. Thank you for inviting us.
So, just real quick, so this has to do with a piece of county-owned property east of Redmond, where the Redmond Rod and Gun, Gun Club used to be located. It's kind of across the highway and east a little bit from the, the airbase there, the Redmond Air Base, that the Forest operates for fire response operations. But it's had a variety of uses over the years. There are some environmental issues that we've been working diligently on. Christie Bollinger, our property manager, is on the call today and has been took over for James in kind of tracking those issues. And we have some known requirements there. And this is land that was also subject to the swap related to the UGB line, Urban Growth Boundary Line, for the city of Redmond, where we were able to include land within the UGB that's closer to services to the northwest of where this is located, to be used as part of the, you know, our piece of the swap with DSL to acquire land south of the Fairgrounds. So this land, action was taken to take this land outside, out of the Redmond UGB, although that technically hasn't been finalized yet, but that, that was the intent of the land use action by the city of Redmond as well as Deschutes County earlier this, or last year in 2020. So there would be some, in order to use this land for more of an urban use, that's considered, you know, within a UGB, there may have to be some, you know, further land use or legislative steps taken to accomplish that. But meanwhile, you know, for some years, you know, a group of, you know, law enforcement organizations and, and others within the area have been talking about the need for a regional training complex of some kind that could also be used for other uses. And that's what you'll hear about today in terms of the land. But, so, you know, all that, all that's requested of the Board is to, you know, give a, you know, some kind of indication of support if you are supportive of the use moving forward in order for further due diligence to be undertaken relative to this. So with that, I'll turn it over to, I'm not sure who's going to lead, whether it's the sheriff or Scott, but you can take it away.
Thank you, Tom. That was a, a great job getting it prepped for us and I really appreciate everyone's time today. I just wanted to share just real briefly upfront that our partners, Scott and, and then of course Chief Ken Kemna, Redmond Fire, is going to speak after me. And, and I just was wanting Scott to give you the overview and he is core, he of course has been involved from the planning and discussions from the start. And then the chief has actually had experiences in training and actual operations with these types of facilities and, and that experience is, is valuable to share. And then Nathan and Christie and, and myself will just, will be around to, to chime in and answer any specific questions. But one of the important things I think to remember in, in any public safety profession, whether it's federal, state and local, is that we often work together and we often have mandated training needs for each of those types of positions. And I'll just, I'll give you one for instance. And by the way, I don't know where all the time comes in to train in addition to doing the job of public safety, and I'm just going to say that right now, because that is one of the challenges that we all have as first responders. It's very easy to legislate requirements based on knee-jerk reaction to concerns and issues that can happen across the nation. And really, we need to digest those items thoughtfully, preferably after an incident has been investigated, to determine what the training needs are. And frankly, whether it's a training need-- to determine what the training needs are. And frankly, whether it's a training need, policy issue, legal issue, or is it a personnel issue? And we just, we need to get rid of an individual or hold an individual accountable. But having said that, I just read a document that says OSHA, you know, wants to, to finalize these pandemic rules and make them permanent. And in there is a piece of training, of course, for pandemics. Now we do that through emergency management. We also do it because we have a jail. But it's one more piece of training time that's being added to someone's schedule. Now we're blessed here at, at our office because we have the resources to do that. But a facility such as a training and response center would provide a, a location so that agencies could conduct these trainings. And then of course, I'll always bring up the National Wildlife Refuge takeover, provide a, a location to actually conduct an operation. But before I, I turn it over to Scott, I do want to just mention my ask right up front will just be that I hope my partners in the commission, and I know you all have been briefed on, on this, I hope my partners in the commission will support this. And also I believe the best way to do this is that the commission continue to oversee and control that property. If they do, if you all do decide to support this and, and agree with this. And as we move forward, then we could have further discussions about bill to suit or what are the, the type of opportunities there. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to my, my partner, Scott, who we appreciate from COIC. And go ahead, my friend.
All right. Thank you. Do I have screen sharing abilities?
It'll be coming in a moment. If you don't, yep.
Okay.
There you go.
Alrighty. So I'm going to just do a brief overview presentation on, we call it RESTCC, Commissioner DeBonne. I don't know. We don't have a good word for it yet, but that's a shorthand I'll be using today. And oh, and by the way, I just want to congratulate my former coworker, Commissioner Chang, before I get started. So what I'm going to cover quickly is why this facility is being contemplated? What's the need for it? A summary of what the proposal is, the process that we followed to this point? The key components of the facility, phases and costs. Then lean into the question of the, the subject property, the, the property we've identified as the preferred, preferred site for this and why? And some of the issues around it, and then the next steps. And one of those next steps is we would, if the Board of County Commissioners is supportive, we'd like to request a letter of support for the project. And I'll get in more detail what I mean in just a minute. And please just interrupt me if there are questions as I'm, as I'm rolling through this. So I think we all know that our region and the Northwest is facing growing threats from natural disasters and other kinds of shocks that we may or may not be well prepared for. Everything from large scale wildfire, which of course, you know, not our region as much, but to some extent our region and certainly west of us experienced terrible situation this year. Flooding landslides, future pandemics, and then of course, Cascadia is out there. Subduction zone event is looming. We at this time have determined and have for a while that our region has insufficient facilities to meet the existing and mandatory training needs. We just don't have all the props and facilities to support all that training for our local, state and federal public safety personnel. We do have some, of course, and, but agencies and departments are having to send folks to other parts of the state and in some cases, other states entirely to, to meet their training needs. And we're a growing region, so this is only going to get worse. We also do not have at least a dedicated emergency operations center. Of course, the county and other, you know, partner agencies stand up the fairgrounds in the event of a, of a situation, but we don't have something that's dedicated to, as a high level emergency operations center. We don't have at least for the county, an adequate backup 911 center with redundant dispatch. And just a note, we all know this, but in the event of Cascadia, we all know the role that Redmond and the Redmond Airport would play in being a, a center for response and recovery. We, so that, that really speaks more to where this facility should be. So what is it? It is envisioned to be a multi-agency coordination center, backup 911, training facility with all sorts of classrooms and props and facilities that you would use for training, as well as a, a tool for Central Oregon Community College's Wildland, Structural Fire, Public Safety, Criminal Justice and other related programs. At this point, they're mainly looking more at using some of the props and, and other training facilities. But there's also the potential down the road that they could move their actual courses to this, this center. So where are we and how did we get here? The, the, the concept for this has been around for quite a while. I said over 10 years. I'm not sure, you know, Sergeant Garabee or, or the sheriff or, or Chief Kemna may know more, but I know it's been talked about for quite a while. It's not, this isn't a recent thing. Took a step forward in 2018, the University of Oregon, their Oregon Partnerships for Disaster Resilience, partnered with, I believe the, the county was the, the main partner there to produce this Central Oregon Emergency Services Center viability assessment, which essentially yielded, yeah, you need this facility. It would be well used. It makes sense. But it was, you know, light on the details of what exact, exact props, the costs, et cetera. So what happened was, as you guys may know, the CYC convenes every other month, a group of the, all the city managers and county administrators in the region. We talk about, you know, shared priorities, regional needs, that a viability assessment was presented at that table. There was a lot of interest. Cities and counties chipped in a little bit of money each. We got up, we, we were able to leverage a state grant. We used all that money to build a, an RFP and procure a consultant to do the next step, which is a deep dive strategic business plan. And I should note that, and there's another slide that kind of lists all the members, but this was guided by a very large steering committee with all the public safety, emergency management, et cetera, agencies, both locally, but also some state agencies were involved in steering this work. The strategic business plan was just published in October, so this is a really good time for this update. Here's the list of the members. I will note that the Deschutes County BOCC had a member, which was former Commissioner Phil Henderson. So one thing that would be nice is if there would be, it didn't have to happen today, but at some point, the, the designation of another commissioner to, to serve on the steering committee. But you can see again, all the, you know, relevant, or many of the relevant local and state agencies are represented on our steering committee. Here are just a very high level list of all the different key components that were determined by, the way we did this was a whole bunch of interviews and spreadsheets that all the agencies were to fill out on what their training needs were. And then our consultants compiled all that in terms of how many hours per year are needed by each partner agency. And, and what, what are the props and facilities needed to, to support that? This is not in a priority order list. That is, the priority ordered list is kind of reflected more in the phasing of how we would build this facility. So, but this is just kind of everything. Everything from emergency vehicle operations courses, which I know is a high priority for a lot of folks at the EVOC. Gun ranges, fire towers, wildland fire training, classrooms, the, the emergency operations center itself, administration and classrooms and whatnot, drill towers, et cetera, tactical training, all, all the, all the stuff. It's a pretty comprehensive list. Oh, there's also, I should note, training for the airport as well and their ARF, what they call ARF training. There's even contemplation of train, train derailment. DEQ is interested in evidently how some train cars we could use for that, that sort of preparation and response. The next few slides are just pictures of some of the types of facilities we're talking about. So I'll breeze through them quickly. Emergency Operations Center, backup 911, classrooms, both clean and dirty classrooms, padded classrooms and sort of a, like a gym looking area, sort of a, you know, with a, with some risers for presentations or events. High bay practical applications, outdoor gun range, indoor simunitions, you know, sort of tactical response and a training type of situations. The EVOC I mentioned, driving skills pads, specialized fire training, different kinds of facilities for that, from the towers to these kind of facilities here to, as I mentioned, the airport fire training facilities, trench and confined space, rescue training, et cetera. So that's just an example. Now here's the big punchline. You know, if you add all these numbers up, you're getting to $100 million. There's no one on the steering committee that is contemplating that we are doing all that at once, or maybe even ever. I, I don't know. That, that's to be determined. We're really focusing more on what do we do first? What are the priority facilities and props that we need on this site first? And this list here is based on the consultant's estimation of the priority demand. But really our phase one will be what do the core partners need the most and are willing to pay for, to, to make happen? And so I, I, I'm, I'm asking that you don't take this phasing to the bank, if you will. It's, it's really what the consultants came up with and it's one of our next steps is to really hone in on what that phase one is, what it really needs to be.
So Scott, where's the money going to come from? The 99 million? Yes, it was actually 29 million, not 100.
Yeah, you're right. I rounded.
Very good question. And when, when in discussions with the, the steering committee and with Scott, it's really one of these things that, I'll give you a for example. Your sheriff's office, we really need a location to have emergency vehicle operation course training. The office drives 2 million miles a year and that is something that we do often. And it, and it has risk, of course, to it when you're responding to an emergency and that's, that goes with any public safety agency. So what would really be nice is, is for us to have a venue where we actually can hold this emergency vehicle operation course training. And so maybe subs of phase one would, would look like, hey, we put in a, you know, an EVOC pad where we can do the, the cone course and then we put in an EVOC lane where we can practice the pursuit intervention tactic. Well, then that means we need to crease our checkbook open. And I'm sure there's going to be some grant opportunities in the future, but the money for, for these sites, when you talk about the phases and what you want to put forth, it's going to be those agencies that have identified their training needs and then accessing those funds. And as far as the commission's concerned, by maintaining the control of that property, you know, the commission would, would have a say, or even if, if you wanted to one year, use some, some funds for that, you could do so. So just because I, I'm asking the commission to, to be the, the landlord of this property and, and carve it out. It's not meaning that, that we're asking the commission to fund the, the project regardless of the price tag. And just a little bit on what Scott said, I would project that this entire site, maybe not the specific training, coordination and response centerpiece, but the future plans for the, the entire site would probably be built out over 20 or 30 years. So this is not a, hey, you break ground and this project's done in a week.
Yeah. And as noted before, it's, no one's contemplating, you know, we're building a hundred million dollar funding plan as our next step. It's, it's what is our true phase one and what's the funding plan for that? And then we contemplate past that. And I'll, I'll speak to that on my last slide as well.
Well, I've been to the facility in Salem and yeah, definitely, you know, it would be nice to have something that isn't two hours away. And do you expect that it would be open to other counties to use? I mean, as far as like the training goes, or would it be only a Deschutes County? Actually, it's Central Oregon, it appears. Cause you've got.
Yes. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Adair. Um, yes, it would, I should, I should have noted at the front, I neglected to note. The reason why I'm involved in CYC is involved at all is because it is meant to be a regional facility and potentially even beyond our region, serving other counties and agencies in eastern Oregon, potentially north and south of us as well. So, but we're, we're there as really a neutral convener and kind of setting the table for this on, on behalf of all the agencies that would use it in central Oregon. The core use would be central Oregon agencies, but there could even be private sector uses for this to generate some operating revenue. So it's, it's meant to serve a lot of needs at once. So I'll, I'll come into this subject property again. Again, as noted, one of our criteria was that it needed to be in Redmond and we did an analysis and this really popped up as not just the best, but probably the only property that made sense. And I have a slide in a minute that kind of goes through the reasons why. So, but not the entire property. You know, right now the contemplation is the southern portion of the property and I'll, I'll just show you. This is the conceptual site plan as laid out on the southern portion of the property. It would shift the, the dark green shading there, number two, was a sort of a set aside in case the National Guard armory would make sense to be located here instead of the other site. I believe that, that ship may have sailed in terms of that opportunity. I don't know 100%. Maybe Sergeant Garabee knows, but, but anyway, I'm looking less likely. So we might, you know, reconfigure this, this conceptual site plan on the site. And, but so why that site? Well, it's sufficient size, 200 plus acres is what we're looking at for this facility. And there's also room to grow if need be. There aren't adjacent land uses that are incompatible with this kind of facility and burn buildings and firing ranges and all the sorts of things that that can create for, say, if there was residential nearby. Has close proximity for, to the airport, which is important for a variety of reasons. And of course, it's under public ownership. So there's some attractiveness there. That site, as noted by Tom, is slated for removal from the UGB. That process is not yet complete. But that's part of all bound up in the Redmond UGB land swap that in turn is bound up in the land exchange between the county and DSL. So right now it's slated for removal from the UGB. And so we know that and understand the land use and infrastructure implications of that. And I've had a series of meetings with county staff and city of Redmond staff and some of our project proponents, determined we, we really need this site to be in the UGB for this to move forward. And there is the potential that we could pursue some special legislation in the upcoming session to streamline that process for a variety of reasons that I'll get to in just a second. We do have lobbyists ready and on standby to support this effort. Again, if the, the BOCC supports, supports moving forward today. So we think that their prospects are actually quite good for special legislation to streamline this being in the UGB. There's very strong regional and statewide significance to the facility. There really isn't anything in Oregon land use law that contemplates this kind of use and makes a provision for how you would meet this need. You know, as, as in general, UGB is a question of the needs of one individual community. Well, this is a regional and statewide need. There aren't properties, other properties available to meet the need in the UGB, the Redmond UGB. The property is in the Redmond Urban Area Reserve and as noted by Tom, there is, there are some environmental remediation issues on the site and we're expecting a pending finding from DEQ that the site will not be considered suitable for agriculture or residential uses. So that, you know, makes some streamlining in terms of the concern from some of the potential opponents to UGB expansion. And then the fact this is just a unique need and it's unlikely to raise issues of precedent for the application elsewhere in the state that again, you know, the folks that would typically be opposed to a UGB expansion might be concerned about. So where we're at now is requesting that, that we would work with staff to create a letter of support from the Deschutes Board of County Commissioners, supporting the concept in general, just, you know, not essentially blessing that we continue to move forward with this process, allowing the proponents to continue to consider the old Redmond Rod and Gun Club property as the preferred site. And then also indicating support for bringing that property into the, the UGB. We're not requesting that, that the land be committed or that there be funding provided from the county at this time. And that is essentially it. Oh, there's one more slide. Sorry. So what is our, our, our next steps, our kind of work plan over the next 12 to 18 months? Is this question of the UGB, pursue the options to incorporate it into the UGB to put a fine point on that phase one, what is going to be phase one really, to begin the design engineering for it? And to build this phase funding plan. Again, it's not a hundred million dollar funding plan. That's out here. But what, you know, what are the first, say, first two phases and what are the tools that we could use to fund them? The sheriff mentioned existing budgets, you know, it's capital improvement type budgets could, could be leveraged together among different agencies. be leveraged together among different agencies to start this process. But there's also the possibility for bonds and state and federal grants and earmarks and private sector donations and foundation grants. These have all been used for similar facilities elsewhere in the state and the nation. And then we are looking at all kinds of user fees for the operational funding side of things. So that is the presentation. Just wanted to, I'll stop my share in case there are comments or questions.
Scott, what is DEQ cost estimated? I mean, I'm sure they're going to want it cleaned up. You said it's not going to be suitable for agriculture, whatever, but I'm sure still there's going to be cleanup there. Is there any kind of a number out there that we've heard?
I'll defer to Christie on that.
So for the record, Kristi Ballinger, Deschutes County Property Manager. Thank you for that question, Commissioner Dare. So over the last couple of years, the county went through a process with Apex Environmental to look at that site and work with DEQ to make a determination of the environmental issues and how that could be remediated. So at this point, it appears that onsite remediation would be allowed, and the rough price tag for that would be around $5 million, and that's opposed to offsite remediation, which would be closer to $10 million. So I'll be coming to your board to talk more in depth about that and probably have our representative with Apex Environmental and potentially a representative with DEQ to be, you know, involved in that presentation to help answer questions further.
Thank you.
Well, I'm real excited about it. We've heard about this before. There's opportunities to, you know, basically improve the property, which ends up being remediation, because just being able to pave it is, in any fashion, is the solution for that. I was able to tour the disaster city facility in Houston, Texas years ago, and it's important. It's regionally important to have training opportunities. There's industry partners, they're just naturally out there. Airline industries, you know, we think of our fire and rescue agencies, but the industry themselves, there's some big players out there, as you see, airlines and rail. Also, the opportunity for different training facility for the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. You know, everybody goes to one place in the state right now, and this could be that alternate location. So, and there's funding down every one of those avenues for different reasons. So when you see this big $100 million number, you know, somebody paves it, somebody offers to partner or build a building, or provide assets to, for a 10-year commitment for training opportunities, and money could really flow there. So I'm a true believer and advocate for this.
Commissioner, I appreciate you saying that. This is Shane. You said a lot of great things there. There's also opportunities, which for future discussions about the acreage, because some of these facilities even have truck driving schools, they'll lease space to truck driving schools, so that they have an opportunity to train safe drivers. And Scott mentioned the train derailment. The other thing that I just wanted to give Chief Kim a few minutes to speak, I know you guys are running behind, and then offer to answer any questions you might have. But just to kind of close, I know we're not asking the commission to set aside acreage at this exact meeting. I would ask the commission to at least set aside 300-ish acres around there for the growth, or 250. I don't know the exact acreage. I'd have to visit with Christie and Scott about that. But I would also ask the commission to consider setting aside future acreage as well for some of the ideas that the commission might have, such as the truck driving school, or I even think, you know, giving City of Redmond Fire a 99-year lease when they expand out to that area and need to put a new fire station there, and they could build it on that plat. But I'd like to give the chief a few minutes, and then we'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Sheriff Nelson. I appreciate it, and thank you, commissioners, for your attention. We really, really appreciate it. For the record, Ken Kena, Fire Chief, Redmond Fire and Rescue. Scott brought up a good point about how long we've been having this conversation. As many of you know, I've only been here in Deschutes County for a couple of years now, but I would share with you that I have been participating in the conversation of a regional training center for 40 years that I have been in the fire service. This is a conversation taking place in every jurisdiction, in every county throughout the United States, and frankly, all over the world. We talk about it as a regional training center, but I really want to step back from that concept, because a training center is only one of the many possible uses for a facility like this. And frankly, it is the easiest one to look towards, but it is probably, it's probably the least important one. A facility like this creates opportunities like nothing else. I have had the opportunity to teach every regional training facility, take classes at regional training facilities all over the country. So we talk about whether or not this is a local resource for just Deschutes County. This is a resource for Deschutes County, for the state of Oregon, frankly, for the United States. I have attended classes all over the country at sites like this, and helped work and plan events at sites like this all over the country. They serve a very important purpose for the community, and think of it as an investment, because this is the kind of site, the kind of facility that frankly, right now, today, would serve a very important purpose for our operations for responding to COVID-19. We would be there, should we be able to co-locate, we would be there every single day. We'd be staging resources there, we'd be taking deliveries there, we'd be, you know, running events from there. These are very important, very usable facilities, and the benefits can hardly be measured. The one thing I will tell you, though, as you know, I come out of California, come out of the Bay Area, and a part of the reason why I have been talking for so many years about creating a regional training facility is it's about opportunity. When you can, when you have the opportunity, when you have the land and you have the time to plan to build one, you should. You should kick every door open you can and continue to move forward to try and create this opportunity for Deschutes County and really for the state of Oregon, if you have the opportunity to do it. Because once the land is gone, once it's too expensive to purchase or it's been built out, you lose that opportunity, and that would be a real shame. We have a very unique opportunity here in central Oregon. I tell you, I speak from experience, the level of coordination, cooperation, and sharing amongst your public safety agencies, public safety partners, I'm just talking about law fire and EMS, talking about, you know, our elected partners, public health partners, the hospital, unit name it, the level of cooperation that I see in this county really takes it to another level. And it's not like this everywhere. A facility like this provides an opportunity for us to co-locate for the purposes of training, to co-locate for the purposes of running large-scale incidents, and build the kinds of relationships that frankly make running large-scale incidents, whether it's wildfire, Cascadia, or something like COVID-19 response, it makes it easier. It creates the opportunity for us to work more closely with our law enforcement partners, our EMS partners, or all of our public safety partners. And frankly, that can hardly be understated in terms of its value. So again, I really do appreciate the time. I am certainly happy to answer any questions you have about the experiences that I have, whether it's an actual incident or running a Super Bowl. These things play a big role in the community, and they pay huge dividends. Always happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, do you have any questions that we could specifically answer for you?
Yeah, I'd love to ask a question. This is a very interesting proposal. I am wondering if you have looked at, if anywhere in your analysis, you've considered avoided costs? So like I heard from a number of you that you, there's expense and loss of time in sending people to other parts of the state, other parts of the region, other parts of the country to get different kinds of training. And if, you know, if you had a sense of, like, here are the kinds of trainings that we are spending the most money on to send people away, whether that might be like a strategic way to look at phasing your project and which pieces to develop first. You know, here's where we can save the most money and, you know, get the most bang for our buck in some ways.
I think that's a great question, Commissioner. And I know Scott has some information on that, because I can see he switched his mic off of mute. But one thing I wanted to throw in there real quick, you mentioned it, Commissioner DeBonne also mentioned it. This was first talked about about 25 years ago, when Department of Public Safety Standards and Training had talked about building a satellite facility on this side of the mountains. It was actually going to be located somewhere over by Juniper Ridge or the Cracker Barrel. And so this discussion's been going on a long time about those exact things and folks going away from training. But I'll turn it over to Scott to chime in.
Yes, I don't have a number to pull out for you right now, but yes, we did look at what the core agencies, in particular, central Oregon agencies are currently spending on training. I'm not sure if we stratified that by their training that they're doing locally versus that they're sending folks to. So we'll have to take another look at that. But there was a deep dive on the current budgets for training and needs for training and where that training is happening, and that is really salient, in particular, to the operating cost side in a lot of ways. But I think it makes great sense to think about that in terms of the development phasing as well.
One thing I might add to that is aircraft rescue firefighting training, just as an example, we send firefighters to Texas to get that training, or we send them to Montana to get that training. There simply is no facility nearby for us to be able to drive to. So it not only provides an opportunity for us to provide that training here so that we don't have to send personnel out of state, it also creates an opportunity for us to bring people in from other locations. Oftentimes, centers like this become hubs for specialized training, whether it's technical rescue, hazardous materials, trench rescue. The ARF training facilities in Texas is well-known. People come from all over the country to take classes there, and the funding associated with those classes helps offset the cost to run the facility long-term. These kinds of places can actually do a lot to help be self-sustaining in that respect.
Thank you, Chief. I would just like to end with this, Commissioners. You always are great partners. My ask would be today for that letter of support that Scott had visited with, or whenever you decide to make that decision, we would appreciate it as soon as you were able to make that decision. But I would also ask that you set aside the 300 acres and some sort of MOU, just so it would be there, and we could visit with Christie and talk about how that would go. And Scott, I just want to remind, Scott has said that as we move forward, the phases of this training response coordination facility will be laid out in such a way where here's the phases, there's subsections to the phases that could also be, could be taken, so that you could cut it off in smaller bits as agencies, or what the commission would like to see, of course, as the landowner. And then we can have that in place, and then that way, as funding opportunities become available, or what the immediate need is, you can do one phase without doing another phase, as long as there's no infrastructure that would have to go along with that. But I'll end that right there, and I really appreciate your time, and I really appreciate my partners' and friends' time that were on the call with this.
Could I just ask Christie a question? Christie, what's the value of those 300 acres?
Commissioner Dare, we don't have an appraisal on that, so I'm not at this point able to answer that question.
Okay, I just was wondering, and then the DEQ cost, you said that's either going to be 5 or 10 million? Is that, that was the range in there, in order to clean it up?
Yes, DEQ has approved onsite remediation, so that would be the lesser expense of 5 million versus offsite, which would be 10 million. So they have approved the onsite remediation.
Okay, so that's 5 million for onsite? Okay, I mean, I'm just, you know, definitely we have the land here, and it's always good to do something before we don't. But just wondering, on the cost, the 99 million, it seems like we should have a number for the land and for the DEQ. So just, I would, you know, just, if it's a total package, what is it we really are putting into this operation?
Well, and Commissioner, I think that's a, you know, that's a great question. And right now, all we're asking, all I'm asking, I won't drag my friends and partners into it, all I'm asking for right now is, I'm asking for the letter of support and for you to set aside those 300 acres. I don't for one minute want you to feel like you're financially obligated or tied to that $100 million price tag. There's going to be lots of discussions prior to that, and we can have those. We're just trying to find the starting place.
Great.
If I could ask, as Christie's looking at putting that information together, it would also be good to get a sense of what else the land might be used for, you know, and if it's...
Go ahead.
You know, if it's, you know, a question of, well, it's right underneath the flight path of airplanes, and, you know, nobody wants to use it for anything else, then that's great. But if there's other, you know, if there are other potential uses of that land that we should weigh and, you know, and consider looking out into the future, it'd be good to have a sense of what those are.
I think that's a great point, Commissioner. One thing to kind of go back, that Scott had spoke about earlier, is with the legacy issues on that property, legacy environmental issues, DEQ is asking the county, again, I need to come and talk to your board more about this, but DEQ will ask the county to limit the use of that property. So no agricultural or no residential. And then if we do move forward with a formal appraisal, the appraisal will also help to determine the highest and best use to that property.
Great. Tom?
Yeah, just to add a little context and to get at Commissioner Chang's question also. I was going to say, normally, you would, you would, you know, ask about some kind of an alternatives analysis in this sort of an issue. But we haven't done a lot of that, but what I can tell you is that, you know, for many years, you know, as you know, the county owns about 1,800 acres total on the east side of Redmond. Passports, you're not obligated to this, but passports have generally looked at that land as sort of expansion area for the city of Redmond. And, you know, the path of progress and different uses tied to that. And this property, particular piece of property, is right on Highway 126, so it's kind of the gateway and the eastern entrance into the city. As Scott noted earlier, and as you see on the chart, the city of Redmond has been involved in this discussion, is on the steering committee, both Mayor Endicott, as well as Keith Witkowski, the city manager, are part of this. In fact, Keith called me a couple of weeks ago and started asked what the path is forward to bring this concept to discussion. So clearly, the city is in favor of this. So any consideration in terms of, are we somehow ignoring the city's wishes in this, with this prominent piece of property, again, right on the highway there, and the answer to that is clearly no, that they are supportive. Another kind of little bit of historical information or context associated with this particular property, Commissioner DeBonne will remember, I can't recall if Commissioner Dare was on the board yet, but there was interest in this property when it was still within the urban growth boundary. A developer had approached the board about basically asking for the property to be given to them, and that they would do the environmental remediation, and they would turn it into developable land for industrial use. And clearly, they expected that they could profit from that transaction and absolve the county of the environmental cleanup cost associated with that. At the, in the end, the board chose a different path, and again, as we've talked about, tied this land, you know, as sort of a leverage point to be able to acquire land south of the fairgrounds. So that initiated the process to do the UGB swap, which took it out of the UGB. A consultant went away after it was no longer zoned for an industrial or more of an urban use. So it, but that also kind of gets at Commissioner Dare's point about the value. So it had a net positive value in the eyes of a potential developer when it was in the UGB, weighing the cost of cleanup versus the return on a clean piece of property within the city. But once it's no longer in the UGB, then that becomes a negative value. In other words, that the cost of cleanup is higher than the market value of the land. So to bring all that kind of back home, in terms of, you know, managing that property for the county, it... for the county, it potentially is a win for the county to be able to allow this kind of development to occur on the property, and again, sort of mitigate the obligation that Kristi spoke about in terms of the environmental cleanup costs that we would otherwise be faced with, that we can kind of kill two birds with one stone there, plus the fact that, you know, the city, which is ultimately the beneficiary primarily of this land in terms of their future, you know, their progression, you know, as the city begins to move eastward, you know, are certainly in favor of that. So just a little bit of historical context with respect to the property. So we would have to bring back an actual letter for you to look at, a letter of support for you to view, if that's your direction today, and also kind of take a look at the, you know, the specific 300 acres that Sheriff requested as part of that, and how that ties to the existing parcel that's there and so forth, as well as some, you know, other, I think, appropriate background information.
Who do we, who are we writing a letter of support to? This committee?
We can help work with a template for you, Commissioner, that would, that would kind of be a guide.
But yeah, so is it to the Steering Committee itself, so it's just to create a stack of support letters, or is it to anybody else?
Let Scott answer that.
I think it would be to the Steering Committee, and I think we would pursue a similar letter from the city of Redmond, and this would be really, at this time, tied to the question of the UGB issue and the upcoming session, that's why there's sort of a timing issue here. But of course, there's potentially other uses for support letters in the future, but this is really more focused around, you know, giving consent to continue moving forward with that property in mind, and supporting if, you know, having that property be in the UGB if this facility is realized, that's the idea here.
So yeah, letter of support on file for, to support this moving forward, so it's kind of to the committee effort. Okay, that could come back. Yeah. Thank you very much.
It could be in turn used in a variety of settings.
Yep, understood. Thank you very much, as I say, I could get real excited about that, and I think I have been in the past, so it's come around again, so, and for the legislative session, that may be the crux of this, so. Okay, thank you very much.
I have the lobbyist work on that, Commissioner, so thank you.
Have a great day, everyone. So it's 12:30, we've just got one more agenda item, do we have executive session today of any sort? So yeah, okay, let's just work through our way through the end here, so consideration of board acceptance of drug-free communities grant by resolution extending 1.0 FTE for Dan Emerson.
For the record, Dan Emerson, Budget Manager, Finance and Health Services are jointly submitting Resolution 2021-001. This resolution is going to accept the Shared Future Coalition Grant Funds, also known as the Drug-Free Community Grant, but also extend a 1.0 limited duration community health specialist position through the duration of the grant, which would be through September 29, 2025, in support of the scope of that work. I'll turn it over to Jessica Jacks, Health Services Supervisor, I think we have some community partners on the line as well to discuss the grant further, and any questions you may have.
Hey, thank you, Dan, and good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Jessica Jacks, I supervise our prevention programs at Deschutes County Health Services, and that includes not only our substance abuse prevention program, which focuses on alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, prescription drug, and to some extent opioid use, but also our problem gambling prevention program, suicide prevention program, our diabetes prevention program, in addition, our mental health promotion program, youth engagement program, and living well with chronic conditions, so quite a few different program areas on my team, but I just wanted to clarify that as public health also does other prevention work. So happy to be here today and really celebrating the big success that the team here, staff, and community partners through the Shared Future Coalition have made at writing a very competitive grant. This is offered by the Centers for Disease Control, and we have been successful recipients of this grant, you know, five years prior. So this is, this new grant is for years six through 10, but it's a competitive process to secure these resources, and the team has done a great job, not only with writing, but in order to get this particular grant, you have to showcase that you have a community coalition that is willing to come together to work on the issue of substance abuse prevention amongst kids. So the two primary goals of this grant application are to reduce substance use amongst adolescents aged 10 to 18 years of age, and for our application, our focus was in the Bend area footprint with the substances of alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana. And the second goal is to increase community collaboration, and we've been doing that through the Shared Future Coalition. And Deschutes County has a memorandum of understanding with the Shared Future Coalition, and that's been on file since 2018, I believe. So really, we're here today to celebrate that, but also wanted to recognize that we did approve the applying of this grant back in March, and at that time, we discussed that future fiscal years may require an increase in county general fund or a reduction in FTEs, so that analysis has been provided to you, but we will certainly bring that forward in the budget process. So at this point in time, I want to turn it over to Lauren Wood, who, along with our colleague Julie Spackman, were the main grant writers for this application, and as well, Katie May Coon, who is with the Central Oregon Community College, but also serves in our leadership at the Shared Future Coalition as our vice chair. So welcome to you both, and I have some words to say, and I would just add that unfortunately, Lieutenant Clint Burley, our chair of the Shared Future Coalition, couldn't make it today.
Thank you so much, Jessica, and thank you, Commissioners, for having us here today to talk about this exciting grant award. My name's Lauren Wood, I am the Drug-Free Communities Coordinator, and I also work closely alongside our community coalition on our executive committee. I am going to have Katie May start us off with kind of an overview of what the Shared Future Coalition is, and then I can talk a bit about some of the data trends that we see in youth related to substance use, what some of our accomplishments have been in this past round of funding, and what our plans are to move that work forward as well with this grant award. So I will start by handing it over to Katie May.
Thank you, Lauren. Thanks, everyone, for being here today. So just to give you guys some background information on the coalition, the coalition represents a close partnership between Deschutes County as the fiscal agent and the Shared Future Coalition, which are formalized in the MOU. The Shared Future Coalition is a collection of individuals, businesses, and organizations who work together to enhance the safety, health, and prosperity of our community. While the coalition serves all of Deschutes County, the DFC grant will provide the coalition with resources to serve the city of Bend. Cross-sector engagement of 12 sectors formally represented, schools, law enforcement, faith communities, media, businesses, youth-serving, government, civic volunteer, parents, youth, healthcare, and community organizations addressing substance use. The coalition's priorities are established through an in-depth community assessments and strategic planning by a multi-sector team of coalition members and prevention specialists.
Thank you, Katie May. You know, I just want to highlight what a strong framework of close community partnership this represents. In order to even apply for this grant, we have to have signed commitment forms that represent this structure that Katie May outlined of our 12-sector engagement. But that said, I would say those 12 sectors are represented, and we have multiple members who are, you know, both parents and maybe are representative of the faith community. So there's a lot of layering of the expertise and leadership that we have at the table, so it's something that we're very proud of. I will jump into some of the data trends that we see among some of our youth use, and starting us off, just to say, we have data that we use primarily through our Student Wellness Survey, which is conducted every two years, and are often looking at things like past 30-day use rates, perception of harm of substances, and some of those other important metrics to tell us where our community is at in terms of some of these different data points. So when we look at eighth and 11th graders in particular in Deschutes County, we've seen an overall downward trend in youth use of substances since 2012, so that's alcohol, conventional cigarettes, and prescription drugs in particular, and I will say, you know, that's obviously great news. Where we have seen a little bit of trending upward is in the area of marijuana since 2016, and also in the area of vaping or e-cigarette use amongst both of those age groups since 2016 as well. So these are certainly areas of concern and where we've been focusing our attention as we've seen some of that data trend upwards, but it is couched in, overall, some good news that we've seen a downward trend since these, the data that we look to from 2012. So the other thing I want to highlight is that we have been using our coalition work to help guide us in where we can work across sectors to partner evidence-based practices with the priorities of our coalition and what the data tells us. So some of our accomplishments so far have been around developing a series of workshops to provide parents with the information, skills, and coaching that they need in order to have effective prevention conversations with their kids. So a large portion of this past round of the grant, really what we were doing in relation to those workshops was developing them, piloting them, collecting rigorously data on what we saw as the outcomes of that workshop, and I'll highlight what we're going to do next around that, but I will say it's really our intention to roll those out more broadly. One of the things that we found in our first round of our parent workshops was that we were running a waiting list by the last couple of workshops, so we clearly have not met the, or saturated the need of parents in this regard, so we're looking at meeting that need using this next round of funding. Another thing we were able to do was translate that workshop into Spanish and have it ready for delivery in Spanish, and the ability to evaluate that as well, to see if this workshop is also something that is of interest and is able to deliver results within our Spanish-speaking community. We also spent a large portion of our last grant cycle partnering closely with our Bend Lapine School District in order to launch a pilot around creating alternatives to out-of-school suspensions for students who have violated the school alcohol, tobacco, or other drug policy. Our hope in this partnership is to equip our schools with the evidence-based curriculum they need, and some specialized support in cases of students who may be higher risk and screened that way, in order to use a policy violation as an important intervention opportunity, and an opportunity to provide students with interventions that can be effective in reducing or eliminating use and subsequent violations, and keeping kids in school. So that's one of our pilot pieces that we have begun in this first round of funding, and looking at closer partnership and the ability to scale those up from just pilot sites to hopefully across the district. So I just wanted to highlight that as another piece, that again, development was in this first round of funding, and the hope to scale that up would be something that we'd be moving into next. And finally, I wanted to also highlight our more recent creation of a youth committee comprised of Bend High School students, and led by them in order to tackle underage substance use issues within their peer networks. So we've been working closely with youth, and have also seen this as an opportunity when we are asked for youth voices to provide insight and youth perspectives on what some substance use looks like, that we have a ready, mobilized, and engaged youth-led group to step into that role. So that's kind of, I would say, a broad strokes highlight of some of our primary priorities in this past grant cycle, how we hope to scale those things up. You know, the other things that I would highlight that we'll be hoping to do with this grant moving forward would be, you know, continuing to engage across our coalition and find out what are those new and emerging trends that we as a community are able to respond to, continuing to work with the school district, and prevent substance use among youth in that area in particular, including through, as I mentioned, scale up of our alternatives to out-of-school suspension work, and then also increasing the perception of harm of using tobacco products, particularly vaping, based on that data increase that I mentioned, and basically increasing, as I mentioned, the perception of harm of both the use of those products and secondhand smoke exposure among our young people in Bend. So that is the high flyover of where we've been, where we're going, and I would love to answer any questions you may have.
I had a question about your data trends. Are those only from Bend Lapine, or are they from the entire county?
So we, I'm speaking of our Student Wellness Survey results that are across the county, so we do primarily look at, you know, when we're working with the coalition with a county-wide focus, we will look at some of those county use trends. Occasionally, we're able to look at more of the school district level data in order to find when that is closely mirroring the county data, and so what I'm speaking to specifically is our Deschutes County data.
Thank you.
Great, any questions?
I asked, I asked the team a number of questions prior to the, prior to our meeting today, just about the program design, you know, metrics of effectiveness that they had, and, you know, funding sustainability, and I'm very excited about this grant, and supportive of, you know, of accepting it.
Great, so it's a Resolution 2021-001, so number one of the year. So I don't see the resolution in the packet specifically, I don't know, just the papers I had, but I'm sure it says we, Deschutes County shall receive a five-year grant in the amount of $125,000 a year.
Yes, Commissioner Bone, it says that, and also extends the community health specialist position through September 29, 2025, to run with that grant. And we couldn't put it in the packet because it was the first of the year, and it was the chair voting, and Commissioner Chang was put onto the commission as well.
Yep, understood, so signature page and just, you know, the final version of it. Okay, just making sure.
I mean, one question I did have was about the staffer, the FTE that's associated with this grant, I found out that that's currently a with this grant. I, I found out that that's currently a limited donation position. And I, I appreciate that, you know, when we're talking about grant-funded positions, it's, you, you may not want to commit to a permanent position when, when a position is primarily being funded by grant dollars. But this does seem like a long-term, you know, if it's a five-year grant, it is, yeah, I, I think it demonstrates a commitment to a program for us to make a position permanent. And, and so I, I was curious about the, the opportunity to do that, or, or, you know, why we wouldn't do that. And I, I don't know if there's any discussion to be had about that, or, or, you know, if any of you could share the thought process with me.
Yeah, Commissioner, good question. You're exactly right. We typically, in the past, have made grant-funded positions limited duration. However, we have made allowances for long-term commitments to convert those. That would be a request of the department to formally convert the position from limited duration to a regular employee, meaning if the grant were to go away, you know, the implication is that the, you know, the, the, we wouldn't dismiss the employee at the same time. With a regular status comes other privileges, you know, of, of a regular, regular employment. So I honestly, I'm not sure if the position is funded now. I think it might be. So that, that would be, normally, the, the limited duration designation comes into play with recruitment, you know, that, that, you know, recruiting a regular employee is more attractive potentially to candidates than, than otherwise. Also comes into play with, you know, obviously, security uncertainty for the employee and looking long-term, that, so there, there may be benefit in this case. But that would have to be from the department, or we could, you know, present that either as part of the FY22 budget consideration, or sooner at the department's discretion on if they, they see benefit in that and would like to bring that back to the full board for a formal conversion of that position.
But over time, we'll, you'll get a feel for some of this. So the, the Health Department does wonderful work. It's quite a crew over there, and it's very dynamic. Every year, when we're in a budget committee meeting, it, it gets, you know, kind of just the balance of, of the grants that are coming in, the efforts that are going on, and it's evolving. So each year, it just changes a little bit. One, one way to think of it is just an opportunity to say, okay, this position is mapped to this effort, which started by this grant. So then, three and five years from now, it, it just kind of gives you guidance about, okay, how do we get here? And, and what's the right number? You know, it's always, that's always our, our discussion. What's the right number in dollars and FTE? And also, just the programs, you know, the programs get named, the efforts get started, and then they might get funded or not funded by state grants or federal grants. So it's just, it's very dynamic.
I would love to make one comment, though, about the Health Department. I did ask Janice or so, a week or two ago, how many people were actually certified for substance abuse? She got back to me, and it was 27 two years ago, but it's only 40 now. And honestly and truly, I believe that is significantly too low. I think, she said she's working on it. What can we do to entice more people to get that certification for substance abuse? Substance abuse seems to be an enormous issue in our country and our world. We've had, what is it, 80,000 substance abuse overdoses this year? We had 70,000 in 18, and now we had 80,000 in 20. So I do believe if that issue can be really brought to the forefront, and more people will be enticed to get their certification for that. I think it could be very impactful for the entire program.
Great.
So I know it's not you guys. I know this is just one person, but I think we really, it needs to be done.
But to tie into, to the emphasis that you're placing, you know, I, I guess I'm just saying, if, if this is, if this kind of programming is a high priority for us, then I'm, I'm just curious whether we should be reflecting that in, A, you know, making these, these permanent as opposed to limited duration positions, and B, you know, as, as needed, it, it doesn't sound like, at the moment, like a general fund commitment is needed to, to, to match this grant. But, you know, as, you know, five years is a long time, and if there's a Phase Three or anything like that, you know, that we, we sort of flag that as, you know, we, we want to demonstrate that we're very serious about this program area by, by making the commitments that are necessary.
Well, I think it's a good idea to get the feedback, actually. What are they going to accomplish the next four years and three quarters? So, you know, you know, it's, really, it's a long-term position, grant-funded. I mean, it just needs to be identified as such. But definitely, we need to hear what is happening and, you know, what we need to get our kids back in school. I know that every parent that I talk to is really desperate. So many kids really are not functioning well with Zoom, and it really, you know, get our kids back to school. So we have to, it's a huge job out there, but we've got to be helpful.
So is there a motion for resolution as presented?
So move.
Okay, great discussion. Anything else? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also. So, thank you very much. You hear our discussion up here, and a great presentation today. Thank you, Brett, for sharing.
Thank you.
Your work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
At this time, we're down to lunch recess. No, let's do other items, and then we'll just call it a day.
Okay.
It's getting to be a long meeting, but we'll get there. So, and there are other, other items.
We have that letter from Julia. I thought we were talking about this flight from Dallas, Redmond to Dallas-Fort Worth a couple of years ago, because my son was actually in Dallas, and I thought direct flight would be wonderful. So it's nice to see that they're asking for a letter of support.
So it's a future grant, I guess, yeah, where's the content? So, do you have, Commissioner? Yep, yep. Just looking for the name of the program. I know it's got...
Small Community Air Service.
There you go. Thank you very much. Yep.
Going to DC.
So this is kind of the Flight Bank concept, a commitment by Central Oregon in partnership with, and, and as mentioned, it read this morning, Redmond Economic Development, Central Oregon Visitors Association. So there's multiple players on this that are just looking for letters of support, acknowledging. And it's also a function of letting the community know that there's a discussion about this flight, because some people really resonate with them. And just like you say, you know, you've, you've needed this direct...
Well, we needed it for the National Finals rodeo.
There you go.
Or Arlington. Yes, it could have worked out really well this last year, a month ago.
So this would be a letter from the Board of Commissioners to the Brooke Chapman, Associate Director of Small Communities Air Service Development Program, in support. Is there any other discussion?
Do we have any sense of how much the grant application is for?
And I'm not bringing that information, but I've been briefed on it a few times. Basically, it's a, as I say, it's a, I'm thinking like $325,000. But I, I mean, that's just a number that might came to my head, so.
I think you're definitely in the ballpark.
Yeah, yeah. So it's something like that.
I just pulled up, it looks like it's $200,000.
$200,000.
$200,000 commitment is what was in the email from COVA.
As I say, it's really, and it's a future. It's like the summer of '22. It's not, not even the night. It's like 18 months from now or something. But this is how you get those flights and the commitment by the airlines, and you get the, you know, just kind of the buzz around the next possible connection.
Well, before the pandemic, I know that this flight was really one of their pushes.
Yeah.
So it's definitely great to see. And if '22 happens, that would be good. So I'll move that we support, or support our signatures on the letter to the Small Community Air Service Development Program for the Redmond Municipal Airport.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, so yep, that was one of our other items. It was ready for us. We've got a couple more things. The Appointments Affiliations, I, I think Sharon printed it's out for me. Yeah, this is kind of another finalized version of it. So here's, here's another support page for it, which is kind of the Appointments Affiliations calendar. So a lot of great work done there. Since we met last, I did speak with Commissioner Chang about the, the MPO Board and offered these, and the EDCO itself, kind of the Tri-County EDCO Board. And as I say, the big picture is this could evolve a little bit. Sometimes, well, you might find that there's a direct conflict, and this happened to me a couple of years ago. I wanted to do two things, but they always happen at the same time. So if there's any proposed changes or edits, or we can just bring it back in the future too. So it's just kind of publishing it again.
I guess I would just say that I do, I definitely do want to make direct connections within the, the communities around the county. And I can do that more informally outside of these appointments as, as well. But that, that might lead to me, like, asking about, about, you know, asking about being alternate, asking about, you know, whether you're going to attend certain meetings, and asking to attend some of those as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, Redmond, Sisters, Lapine, all over.
Well, we, as Commissioners, we do have flexibility, you know, we can, and just like was already mentioned, and Dave explained it to us, I mean, we can publish public meetings, or just the fact that we'll be both attending another public meeting anytime. So, yeah, it's an opportunity. And as I say, this, this isn't, I mean, it's available publicly, but it won't be published like in a printed document or anything until our budget in July 1st, or for the July 1st budget. So that's the next time it'll kind of be stabilized. So, any thoughts, Commissioner?
I have no thoughts.
Yeah, so we'll just go with it. Exactly. Just a point in time. Yesterday, or two days ago, yesterday was, sorry, interviews for the Deschutes County Fair Board. So we had five people. Tom, I asked Tom to print out a couple pages for us. And there's two recommendations from the group yesterday. So we'll step our way into this. You can see the names. And they're having a meeting two weeks from now. So we don't, we don't really have to make a decision today unless it falls into place. We could do other, bring it back, or if there's a interest in talking to these applicants, you know. So we have opportunities. So from yesterday, we interviewed five. These are the two suggested names, and attached resumes from these folks. So I'll, I'll mention that David Bishop has been on that board for many years, and he was suggested for reappointment. What an opportunity to have that, you know, depth of knowledge and history. Also, he's just really been advocate and promotion, I didn't bring my notes, but promoter of the fairgrounds. But all the nonprofits and boards, he's been on for many years. So it's, it's a reappointment. And then the other seat, Cheryl Davidson, we wanted to say a special thanks to her. She just announced that she wasn't going to be running again, so that provided this open seat. So as I say, special thank you to Cheryl, and I did email that to her because when she notified us. And then, so Liz, Elizabeth Ritchie, Liz is what she goes, or Lizzie, I guess, is the other person. So this group was, you can see Jeff Hines was there, Aaron Curtis and Steve Curley from the Fair Board. So two Fair Board members and myself yesterday with Jeff Hines on Zoom calls yesterday morning. So it's an appointment by the Board of Commissioners. As I say, whatever you feel comfortable with, however you want to proceed at this point. The, you know, I'm supportive of these being part of that committee work yesterday.
And so there's, there's two being recommended for two positions?
Yeah. Well, and we, so this was a public process. We had wonderful applicants from around the county that applied. And every one of them said, man, I was so excited when I applied for this. You know, so I feel, it's a shame there's only two seats. And from the applications, there were five interviewed yesterday. As I say, from my experience, I remember a year or two ago, I brought some names in expecting a, you know, acceptance of the names. And then we had gone back and said, okay, well, let's either talk to somebody or review it more. So as I say, it's up to this board, as the three of us, how do we want to proceed? So I guess it's either a motion to accept today, or bring it back to another board meeting and, and just see if there's opportunities.
Technically, we would, you know, if, if the board just gives a general head nod, we would, we would put the actual appointment letters on a future consent agenda, as well as a thank you to the outgoing board member on there as well. So that would be your formal mechanism to approve them. But I probably wouldn't put them on there until we have sort of an understanding that, that's, that you're supportive of them.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'd actually ask Wendy Avery to apply. And I saw the kind of work that Wendy does. She did the 75th for the Crooked River Roundup before the pandemic. And it was an amazing production. She took it over, she revamped it. And I was incredibly impressed with her work. And so I'm disappointed not to see your name here. I know that David's been on the board. He, you know, he's a real asset to that group. He's very diligent, and I appreciate what he does.
Looking, looking at these applications or qualifications, you know, in this compressed period of time, I mean, it's hard to evaluate them very in-depth. But I mean, these, these appear to be two qualified people, and, you know, to me.
As I say, it is that transition, because, you know, we started this process previous to your report, your, you know, where it ends.
You all have seen the, the applications earlier.
No.
We've had...
No, we didn't see them.
So this was the subset of, of applications. But, yeah, and we could go back and you could review them all. So as I say, as one Commissioner, I was selected to join a couple board members and the director to go do this. And these are recommendations. So this is kind of that new beginning of how do we feel comfortable proceeding as a group of three?
Well, I know when I did it, that you guys, we continued on, and everyone did some, you know, we met again with the people. So I, you know, because it is really, it's an important position. It's not just the fair and rodeo, it's the overall, what's happening at, you know, Deschutes County, our expo center. So anyway, that is my comment on it.
I mean, to some degree, it's, we are, it seems to me that we are entrusting this process of, of review and selecting to a review group. And I'm, I have no reason to think that this review group didn't, didn't, you know, do, didn't do its due diligence and, and try to evaluate these, these candidates to the best of their ability. So I'd be, I would, I'd be comfortable proceeding, or if we, if Commissioner Adair has, like, an alternative proposal, I'm also, I don't, I don't see any rush to, to, to proceed with this either. So I'm comfortable going either way with this.
As I say, this is that moment where we try to figure out how we do this. Because next time, I don't think there's any outstanding appointments that are in process right now. Next time, we'll start the process as the three of us and be able to proceed through. So, yeah, Aaron Curtis and Steve Curley are current Fair Board members, you know, so we've appointed them as the active board also. So they're kind of the, the content, the primary, you know, board members with the, with the people they'd be working with also. So...
I mean, as a, as a general principle going forward, I, I do very much like the idea of entrusting people who are, you know, very immersed in the issue and knowledgeable about it to, to, to vet people and make recommendations. So if, in this case, we need to consider a little bit more, I'm, I'm open to that. But, you know, kind of as a general, as a general rule, I, I, I don't, I, I like, I like the idea of having, you know, an external review group that are very involved with the issue and...
Yeah.
And entrusting them to, to, to vet the candidates.
So as I say, there's Ritchie. So as I say, Liz Ritchie, very experienced in some, you know, just national efforts, resume is available here. She's an active mom right now, but she's come out of some corporate world and promotion, you know, just ready to go. And there is to say, there is, there is multiple applicants like this too. So this is after we, you know, went through the whole list and started slicing and dicing, this is the name that came together, you know, by those board members and myself. And I mean, I know Wendy Ever and I've known her for a long time too. She's got a great resume, very exciting to, to see her in there and we did talk to her yesterday also.
Good.
So are you comfortable proceeding, Commissioner?
No. I, we're talking, we're looking at someone who has a resume from healthcare nationally and I'm going like, okay, I really feel like, you know, I'd like to talk to some of her resumes or some, somebody on here and see, okay, yes, you know, I see she worked for Gordon Smith, you know, just to get a better feel. Because I know Wendy is part of our community, she's been here for a while and it's just like the other day on our call at 7:00 AM, when you heard from the new Commissioners, you heard from people that were born in Lakeview and they've been there their whole life and now this is their opportunity to give back. And I know Wendy came up from Cloughmouth County and, you know, she's somebody that my family has known for a long time. I haven't known her for decades, but my family has. And I, you know, I just know she's an outstanding person. So I guess I would just like to feel like this person has that connection here and, you know.
Great. Well, so yeah, let's, if, would you like to talk with, yeah, do your homework on this? I don't know who you'll talk to specifically, but yeah, so I'm not pushing it today. As I say, it's the dynamic for the three of us trying to get these appointment processes done.
Okay.
We'll go from there. Okay, I've shared it, so.
If you want to send the letter to David, that's fine. I just.
Oh, okay, well, so that, I mean, that's a good, good way to proceed.
Or not, or do we hold that back and just wait?
I mean.
Put it on next week's, what is it? We don't have a meeting on Monday because of AOC, but on Wednesday, and I know we have a full day Wednesday.
I'm sure Mr. Bishop would appreciate if clarity, if you want to do that, that's a way to go.
So I move we accept David's application today.
Great.
Reappointment to the Fair Expo Center.
I'll sign.
Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Chang? And I'll vote yes. So there we go, half, half of that process. So other note for me, I did attend the Redmond Economic Development Board this morning. There's a great update from the Small Business Development Center effort of COCC and their staff around Central Oregon. So they've mentioned that there are a lot of activity, very dynamic, you know, the entrepreneurial spirit is strong though. One of the statements was restaurants, and we saw it, you know, from our restaurant licensing discussion just now, restaurants are struggling, they're, they're changing form, they're, some are going out of business, but the message was that there's usually somebody behind them willing to either, you know, take their restaurant or the equipment or try the next version of something. So that was interesting to hear today. So that tells you we do have a resilient economy here. Central Oregon is known for, you know, tourism and the restaurant industry. So that was just one of the notes I picked up today, pretty exciting.
But I think you have to look at economically what's happening. People are still coming here. We're still seeing that room tax, but people are now going to the market and buying everything. They're no longer, you know, it's become not as convenient either to go eat out, eat outside or pick up. And so their, their revenue has really been stressed in this environment and yet our room tax has not. So it shows that people are still coming here, but they're definitely spending their dollars much differently.
And while they'll be, while there's going to be opportunity for restaurateurs in the future, it, it doesn't mean that it's not really hard for the ones.
Oh, yeah.
Who are around right now. I, you know.
It was just, yes, Small Business Development Center said that they had people still scoping out the restaurant business, which means that there's, the spirit is out there, is kind of the concept.
But if you drive down Sixth Street in Redmond, which I did on Monday and I did yesterday, and it's really sad, all the empty buildings. I mean, all the coffee shops that are on Seventh Street were all closed. Yeah, it's, you know, there's a lot of families whose, you know, somebody from their family works at one of those locations that's been shut down or they're only open for three days a week instead of, you know, they were open six or five or whatever. So, yeah, it's, it's been, a lot of people I think are really hurting.
But you're right, the resiliency of the industry long-term, I, you know, I, I have no doubt that there's going to be lots of people who want to eat restaurant food.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, you know, I just hope that we can help some of the great business people that we have now get through this.
Yeah.
Yes, get through it.
Anything else, Tom? Anything else? That's it, looks like it. For other items, meeting adjourned.